Long. I'd like to go ahead and call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. If we can have Mr. Jim Krujshat help us out with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Face the flag, hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can have roll call. Commissioner Krujshat?
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Here.
Commissioner Walker?
Here.
Vice Chair Dixon?
Here.
Chair Palahana?
Here.
All present? Thank you. And then, so announcements. The proceedings may be viewed on demand on the City of Twenty-Nine Palms website at www twentyninepalms.org. You may also livestream this meeting by going on the city website and clicking on the meeting's agendas link. Public comments. This is a time for the public to address the Planning Commission on issues within the jurisdiction of the commission that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the Chair of the Commission and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional and courteous decorum during their comments. There is a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out your name and address slips and give them to the Planning Commission Secretary. The Planning Commission is prohibited by the Brown Act, state law, from taking action or discussing at length items not included on the printed agenda. Public comments on specific agenda items will be deferred until consideration of the item on the agenda. Commission comments and reports of meetings attended. Mr. Mendoza?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
I have not attended any as well.
Thank you. Max?
I haven't attended any meetings since our last one.
Thank you. And Jim?
Yeah, nothing significant to report.
Okay. And I also have not attended any meetings since our last. I do appreciate all the public being here today. Look forward to getting into our agenda. So go to the consent calendar. We have the approval of Planning Commission meeting minutes for June 22nd. Everybody have a chance to review? Do we have a motion?
I have a motion. We approve minutes as read with the selection of the correct spouting of your name.
Oh, thank you.
And I will second.
Yeah, that was on a resolution.
Never mind. As approved, as read.
Thank you. I have a motion.
And I second.
And a second. Roll call vote? Commissioner Krujshat?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dixon?
Aye.
Chair Palahana?
Aye.
Five oh approved. Items removed from consent calendar for discussion. We don't have any. I actually did not open it up for public comments at that time. Thank you Travis, I felt your vibe. So, again, I'm gonna backtrack back to our public comments. So it's in regards to just speaking on anything not on the agenda. I did not have any request for non-agenda items, so is there anybody who would like to have public comment? I'm gonna open the public and close. Okay, back on track. Thank you, Mr. Travis. Alright, so we'll go into our public hearings. So, item two, which is PC 21 dash 29 VHR appeal for Palo Verde Avenue.
Madam Chair, before we begin, just kind of an opening statement. There's a wide array of opinions on this topic within the community. Within the last two weeks, our department have received comments such, "VHR should not be allowed anywhere within the city." One comment, "I fully admit I stayed in a VHR before moving here, but I don't want one next to me." "One or two in our neighborhood is okay, but too many harm residential character." What is the definition of too many? "A derelict house with junk cars and constant drug activity has been cleaned up on my street. I'm all for them." "As long as they are run properly and adhere to the rules, there should be no limits on the number." And then, most recently, somebody on the phone saying the government should not be telling me what I can and cannot do with my property. So, kind of the full range of opinions, and then there's a pile of comments for you as well. So, in approving or denying projects, we have to follow the Development Code and be objective in the evaluation of all applications. If the community wants to add more restrictions and regulations to VHRs, that is done by changing the code. And that is through the policymakers, which is city council. These new restrictions and regulations then need to be applied evenly and fairly in a manner that is not subjective. So that's what we're trying to do. In our study session this evening, we will review additional restrictions and regulations that have been suggested some at the last city council meeting, get feedback from the public, input from the Planning Commission, and send those on to city council. With that, we'll start with the first case.
Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners. This item is an appeal of the Community Development Director's decision to approve a vacation home rental. The appellant is Randy Newman and the VHR applicant are Dimitri and Irina Efremov. The property is located at 5580 Palo Verde Avenue. It's a four, I'm sorry, .43 acre parcel, and the property's zoning is residential, single-family, three lots per acre. This is a location map showing you where it's located on the corner of Manana Drive and Palo Verde Avenue. And then we have a couple of photos of the structure. So, the appellant has cited the following reason as basis for the appeal, potential for increased noise in the area. Code enforcement has received no complaints regarding this property. So, vacation home rental permits are considered ministerial approvals. That is defined as a permit that is granted based upon the determination that a proposed project complies with established standards in the zoning ordinance. Therefore, if all required documentation is submitted by the applicant and the project is in compliance with the Development Code, the permit will be issued. The VHR ordinance does not contain any language limiting the number of VHR permits within the city limits, nor does it require a distance between permitted VHR locations. The applicant has submitted all the required documents for the VHR applicant, application. The application is in compliance with the requirements of the Development Code. The only remaining item to be completed is a safety inspection, which is conducted by building and safety. So remediations for violating the requirements of the Development Code are to cite the applicant for the violations, not renew the permit based upon those violations, or to revoke the permit based on the violations. So staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and approve the application for the vacation home rental. That concludes the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Jim, do you have questions?
A quick question. For this proposed location, do we know how many notifications we sent out within that, or do we know the number? Or even in a guesstimate? I think approximately thirty. Thirty? Okay, thank you. Yes.
Max?
So they haven't had their, their safety inspection yet, right?
Correct. They have not had the safety inspection.
So if, but if we, if we deny the appeal, they get their, approved for their permit, correct?
Right.
What happens if they don't pass the safety inspection?
They would not be issued the permit.
So it'd be a motion for like a condition of, a condition of the safety inspection passing?
Well, yeah. But they would not be issued the permit until it's passed.
Thank you. Jason?
I think to reiterate, so when we deny the appeal or they continue forward, that's when they get their safety inspection. It's never done before. It comes to us if there's an appeal, right? So that's normal. Or is the safety inspection usually done prior to if there's an appeal?
It's usually completed prior to the, well, it can be done prior to the appeal. Normally, normally it's completed before we get to the Planning Commission.
Okay, and then, so why is it not completed now, then?
They just, they have not called for that inspection. Once an appeal is filed, we have a certain, only a certain amount of time to get it before the Planning Commission. So if they're, if they haven't completed that, we just make that a condition of their approval.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Thank you. I do not have any questions. Before I open it up to the public, this will go, like, basically what I'm trying to explain is that we need to respect each other. This meeting has a flow. There's an agenda that we'll all follow. And so there's a public, you know, hearing, so I'll open it to the public. We do have a limitation of three minutes. However, the applicant and the appellant have an unlimited amount of time to speak on the issues. If you did fill one of these out, we're gonna go in order of, it would be applicant speaking, then appellant, and then I'll call as I received the address and name slips, based off whatever number you checked at the bottom here. If, there are several views that are the same. Just wanna let you know the page that you didn't sign. If all interest, like the commission is particularly interested in the specific reasons for which you are against the proposal. So if you guys are all kind of saying the same thing, trust me, we hear you, like we understand that point that you're making. So in like the interest of time, if, you know, everybody just wants to have their voices heard, so yellow slips will be three minutes. Just so that everybody's clear on that. It's not really an open forum for like question and answering, so if you have questions as we're proceeding through the meeting, it's not like you can raise your hand and talk. That's just not the, the style of meeting, how it's ran. So please don't think that we're ignoring you or it's rude, but you can, if it's in that item, you can fill out one of these to speak upon it during that public hearing. So also, if you just feel like you still have some more questions, we do have the staff available. You can also email or call or, you know, request a visit as well. So with all of that being said, in the respect of each other, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and allow Efremov to be able to speak first. So I'm gonna go ahead and open.
Hello, gentlemen. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We are Irina and Dimitri Efremov, owners of this house. Thank you so much for giving us a chance to say few words about this situation. We really expected this claim. Because when we bought this house, our neighbor, Ms. Newman, was very unfriendly and she told us, "I will fight you." So, her main concern of this appeal is a potential noise from our potential guests. Here are our arguments about this situation. First, nobody is insured from permanent noisy neighbors. Especially when those noisy neighbors are owners or long-term tenants who live there and nobody can evict them for being noisy. Ms. Newman mentioned it in her appeal letter that we both have noisy neighbors. Can you show where is it? Who are full-time residents. But short-term renters can be evicted if they are breaking the house rule or city policy, especially about parties and quiet hours. Second, Ms. Newman, even herself, had a very loud party on July 9. Sometimes her dogs also bark so loudly and our little son, who sits here, closed his ears and hid inside the house. It happens. We didn't complain about it. I am very curious why these real and loud sounds don't affect your grandson, but a potential noise from our potential guests definitely would. Third, Ms. Newman bought, bought her house three years ago in May 2018. She knew that this city and this area are touristic and allow it short-term rentals. It's her choice to raise her grandson in this area. On the other hand, we totally understand her, because we are also family, that she wants to keep her family safe and protected. What we can do, what we will do as respectful and responsible neighbors and hosts to make our neighbors feel more comfortable and safe. First, we will do our best, do not allow our guests to disturb our neighbors. That's why we have very, very strict policy, guest policy, especially about quiet hours and about parties. So we agree with the city hall, with the city hall policy about minimum two nights stay because it significantly reduce the chance of parties. The second, to protect our sensitive neighbors, Ms. Newman and her grandson, we already installed three noise detectors by her side. As you may know, the sole purpose of these devices is to detect loud noise and notify guests directly and immediately that they are too noisy and need to keep it down. If guests continue to ignore notifications, then we will take action on this. This device works for both sides. Along with, along with outside cameras, it also protects guests from neighbors who decide to call to police without any reason. Sometimes it happens, you know. But there might be small problem. The noise detector's catch of neighbor's sounds too, like a party, dog barking, screaming, loud playing basketball, et cetera, and send notifications to the guests. The third, third, we cooperate with our neighbors who wants to do it. They feel more comfortable and safe when they know what's happening around their house. We have other neighbors who receive notification letter from the city hall about our request to get vacation home rental license. And they came to our house and offered to cooperate. These neighbors totally understand that they live in the tourist area where VHR is allowed and they have the right expectations. We exchange itself for numbers with few people to help each other. In conclusion, we want to offer our neighbor, Ms. Randy Newman, to cooperate with us too. She could call us anytime when she sees the guests broke the rules when they loud. She will feel more comfortable, safe, and calm. So dear mayor and council members, we do every single legally. It's our family business, small. It's our first vacation rental house. We do nothing illegally to earn money for living, for a living. That's why for all reasons, we kindly ask you to deny this appeal. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We are the Planning Commission, Chair of Commission and then our fellow commissioners, so not mayor or city council members. But, maybe one day. But, thank you. I appreciate your comments. Okay, so we will have the appellant, Randy Newman? Not, oh. Oh, that's okay. It's not necessary for appellants.
Good evening. I'm at 73777 in Manana Drive, which is immediately adjacent to the property on the agenda. And I am adamantly opposed to VHR only because of the noise. And the way our properties are aligned is they have a U-shaped patio over against my property line, which is about 10 to 15 feet away. My property is already five or six feet above the ground plus a six-foot ripper fence. And it's very favorable for noise, echo right there. And as far as my Tasty Ground Sunday's number one trigger is noise. And I don't know about a party on July 9th. I must have missed that one, but I don't have loud parties. I make sure my groundskeeper out of the pool and quiet by 10 o'clock. People of kindness don't provide by that rule, but we are looking for them. And it's nice if they have noise monitors, but it doesn't prevent the noise. And yes, apparently, when I rent to families, that's one thing, too nice, it's gotta be, you know, tremendous noise. So my, my concern is for my groundskeeper, he's six foot tall, but we turn the panel, and I can't reach him anymore. So, you know, the one thing I don't want to have to do is move him back to the upstairs. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Okay, so go ahead. We have several filled out slips. I'm just gonna call them as I have them in order. And just as a reminder, three minutes, and we will have a timer. So when you're queued, we don't have to make this awkward, like please stop talking. Like let's just agree that, you know, you've had your three minutes, and then we can move forward. I'm sure that several people may also be saying the same thing that you may be saying, so I believe your points will be, you know, across.
Madam Chair, can I have a moment to talk to Ms. Newman? Again, I had a question to ask her. I think it's the right time to do that, right?
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah. If you'll just come to the podium so we can hear your responses.
Sorry, I just had one question. So you mentioned earlier, you said you have a property owner, is it behind you there that has loud noises as well?
Oh, until 6 o'clock in the morning.
And?
Basketball court out there and everything.
Are they a VHR?
No.
So they are a home. Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, let, let it begin. Here we go. John Carlisle.
Hello, my name is John Carlisle, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I live at 73813 in Manana Drive, which is approximately this property right here. I guess I have three, three main concerns. One, I don't want the, the policeman of the neighborhood complaining about loud noise. In very, I understand the Efremovs have taken steps to mitigate that. But I just don't want to be the bad guy having to call them or call the police for a noise violation. The other thing is, I understand that the neighbor adjacent to me to the east is planning on turning their property into an Airbnb. And so that would be two Airbnbs on both sides of my property. And, you know, it's like, I, I just, today spoke with a realtor and asked him what the ramifications of having Airbnbs for resale value for an next door property. And he said, he hasn't really seen anything, but you are required by disclosure to mention if you have an Airbnb next to you and if there's noise violations. And so that puts me in a kind of a difficult situation if I want to sell my house down the road because I would have them have to disclose if there, if there are noise violations or anything like that. So I have met the Efremovs. They're lovely people. And I want to be a good neighbor to them, and I know they want to be a good neighbor to me as well. So that all.
Thank you. We can have... Just wanna make sure Ms. Shelley's right, because we're sticking to our three minutes, right, guys? Alright. Julie Glantz? Okay, would you like me just to go like this, and you're at the end? Alright. We got a system, guys. Okay. Cindy Bernard?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Cindy Bernard. I'm a resident of the community of, and I'm helping down with Twenty-Nine Palms neighbors, which is a disadvocating, the limits on VHRs. I'm here in support of all of the appeals, so that's why I'm speaking to my neighbor. I've spoken here before. You know that I'm for limits on VHRs. And to make that very clear, I mean limits, not a ban. I'm not going to repeat the things I usually say, but I do have a question. I have a few observations based on comments that some of you have made at past meetings. More people leave that VHRs don't impact the residential character of neighbor visiting tech. I don't know why you didn't put the code up, because that would be great for everything to see, but it wasn't there. Anyway, it's describing the approval code. Therefore, staff need not review existing VHRs in your appealed properties. Is that your own opinion, or is that an opinion you've gotten from the city attorney? If you haven't gotten it from the city attorney, I would ask that you actually get a formal ruling on this from the city attorney, so we're not dealing with opinions and have something that we can go by. Now to my observation, and these are based on things Angela said, but I've changed her names. Commissioner Ipart VHRs has said that he's surrounded by VHRs and thinks they're great. Commissioner Make 'em All VHRs has said that he wishes all long-term rentals were short-term rentals. And Commissioner Unaffusive hasn't been abusive, but he always votes to deny appeals. I've done a little research, and I've discovered that your experience with VHRs is very different than most of the Twenty-Nine Palms residents. And I'm just asking you if you can exhibit a little more empathy, given the amount of space that some of you actually have, because not everybody has that space. Commissioner Ipart VHRs, you are indeed surrounded by VHRs, which are also under 2.5 acre parcel. Looking at an overhead map, there appears to be seven homes and three VHRs that are across that 40 acre parcel in which your property is located. It's not your parcel, but it's like 40 acres. That's where the property is. If you know, do you know how many homes and VHRs are in the equivalent 40 acres in Union Home? There are 105 homes and nine VHRs. Commissioner Make 'em All VHRs, there's only one active VHR in your neighborhood. In the 2.5 acre parcel, and between your 2.5 acre parcel and the VHR parcel, you know, VHRs are in similar space in Union Home, there are five active intended VHRs. And if you're unaffusive, there haven't been any VHRs in your neighborhood. But there are two planned, and that's why 11 of your neighbors filed appeals tonight. I'm not sure what, I'm not even sure they know about the other one that's five or seven acres, that's a catty corner from the one that's already appealed. Both are unhappy for parcels. Would you want to be the house in between them? So again, I'm asking you to have a little more empathy with the experience of the average Twenty-Nine Palms homeowner who's four houses, two acre, or a house and a half acre. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Travis, did you get ahold of the city attorney per the email that Cindy had sent?
Well, it, it's one of those things where the code is being implemented as it is, as it's written for six years. And the notion of residential character, you know, under strict reading of the code is meaning not a commercial use, not an industrial use, not an institutional use.
Right. People are seeing there as a house to sleep in.
Right. But residential character...
Because it's rented, that's where people are saying now it's more commercial, that they feel more commercial.
Exactly. And residential character i- is important, but it's not something that is a viewpoint shared by everybody in the same way. So if we start to add some restrictions on it, then I think those need to be in the code. Because we're now changing the way this code has been administered for the last six years arbitrarily. Without those changes, I think that opens up to potential liability.
Okay. And tonight is VHR night because we do have our study session regarding adjustments of regulations or how we can adjust that code. So we're still gonna proceed with number two, the rest of our stack.
Miss Chairman, before we do, my understanding, when we wrote this code and it went through the Planning Commission process and then went through the process with the city council, it was reviewed by the city attorney.
Of course.
So it has been reviewed by the city attorney, as a matter of fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, continuing. Chuck Hurd. Shelley, three minutes. Shelley, three minutes.
Thank you, Lieutenant Commissioner. My name is Chuck Hurd. I'm resident in, in whole neighborhood. I'm voicing my opinion in regard to short-term vacation home rental applications and the rubber stamp process of them being approved by the Planning Commission. It is very apparent there is a bias in favor of vacation home rental applications that the Planning Commission approving 100% of applications even when the community members strongly disagree. Appeals for short-term vacation rentals appears to be already predetermined and denied by the Planning Commission. This appears to be a common practice for this commission. Commissioners should be making decisions in a fair and impartial manner, but that's not happening. As you have stated, as long as a permittee has done the paperwork, he'd have to approve. And every appeal is denied in favor of short-term rentals for residential character, which you just talked about, of a neighborhood is being threatened. As you are well aware, the Planning Commission consists of local residents who are appointed by the city council. As you are well aware, the planning commission consists of local residents who are appointed by the city council. Supposedly, the commissioners are chosen for their independence, integrity, and civic commitment to, to serve the whole community. Planning commissioners have a responsibility to provide an objective and independent voice on matters relating to the city's financial development. That does not seem to be the case, the process is broken. Rather than working to serve the whole community, it appears to be short-sighted, once a significant number of homes are occupied by short-term tenants. The housing shortage for long-term rentals has an impact on the stability of our community. The availability of long-term rentals is a growing problem, and there is an insufficient supply of housing. If the planning commission continues to permit short-term rentals without limits, there will be no housing to retain a workforce needed to sustain the local economy, and the city will suffer. Our cities may be able to abort, abort, um, excuse me, absorb some of the loss to the units, lots of units to the short-term rentals. The result in our smaller city is quite different, and it affecting the character of our neighborhoods and the community as a whole. Limits need to be applied in short-term rentals to maintain the long-term sustainability of the city. And I'm, I hope the appeals will be denied.
Thank you.
I'd be opposite whatever I think. Sorry, I get confused at all.
Okay, um, thank you for your comments. Heidi Hurd?
My name is Heidi Hurd, and I've been a resident of twenty-nine Palms and lived in Indian Cove since nineteen eighty-eight. I am speaking tonight in support of the three V H R appeals listed on agenda this evening, one of which is located in Indian Cove. The approval of so many V H Rs in twenty-nine Palms, and particularly in Indian Cove, is altering the characteristics of the neighborhood. It is increasing traffic on our already neglected streets, depleting the supply of long-term rentals in the area, and removing the neighborhood element of keeping an eye out for unusual activity, i.e. possible crime in the neighborhood. It is ruining the city of twenty-nine Palms. In the appeal package for six nine three oh one Cottonwood, you know where the V H R is on the map, but what is missing on the map is the already permitted V H R directly to the south. The approval of V H R on Cottonwood put two V H Rs adjacent to each other, will there be another one soon right next to those two? Limits are needed in an area and in the city. The city of Palm Springs has a limit of thirty-six contracts per year. We're not Palm Springs and can never hope to be, but if they can impose limits to protect their city, then we can too. If those of us that reside here had wanted to have that type of atmosphere, we have, would have chosen to live there instead of here. The wording on your agenda document appears to be ordered as if filing an appeal is a mute point, as you're already recommending denying appeals, even before they are presented to the public and before the public can state their opinions. It appears the process is flawed. Maybe the letters to the surrounding properties notifying them of the pending application need to be sent within seven, ten days of the application being submitted. Then appeals could be filed earlier and the planning commission could make a more informed decision about approving or denying the application. Appeals need to be heard prior to the permit being approved. When was the last time that all the hotels, particularly in twenty-nine Palms, within all the entire renovation, were filled to capacity and all had no vacancy signs out? Approving all these V H Rs is also detrimental to these businesses and is cutting into the revenue that the city is so eager to collect. Neighbors' pots are for neighbors, not vacation home rentals. Vacation home rentals are a business that do not belong in residential neighborhood. It's time to start looking out for the citizens of the city and its neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Christina Hood?
Hello, I'm also a resident in Indian Cove. I'm just completely responsible, keeping this up, the advocates that I'm a main spoke. First of all, comparing the number of V H Rs in twenty-nine Palms to the number that were here three years ago is lovable. When that property next door to me filed for a permit, uh, excuse me, the number of two thousand and nineteen, it was permit number eighty-one. The city currently has a hundred and ninety-eight permitted and pending applications. To compare those two things is ridiculous. Second of all, I fell for the same mistake of medicine, thinking you were happy, thinking that I could buy your house in Cove, or, excuse me, in twenty-nine Palms, and that. The city have regulations that allow me to live in a nice neighborhood with a community that those relations meaningful, and I have found since then that that's not true. I can imagine they just, they're dead. I can't imagine comparing the situation now with that three years ago. Second of all, you absolutely can't take long-term permits for breaking any law if you know something exists. And third of all, treating all noises the same for a person with autism is disingenuous. The challenge of all the law and the timing, all of those things can be really important in terms of how that person responds. To my prepared remarks, I'm writing in support of all three appeals by the V H Rs on, planned V H Rs on Cottonwood, Calabria, and Cove Street. Finally, again, I refer to the planning commission's statement, they have got multiple complaints about vacation home rentals. As you may know, there was a concert at a vacation home rental a few weeks ago in Indian Cove. Because I have Cove, clearly, I have already complaints, I filed a complaint online through the online event system, and I also called the sheriff. The sheriff did not respond. The city did not respond until Monday morning, which was a day and a half later, when the planning commission, I mean, code enforcement officer walked in and looked at it. I also responded to that letter by email. I received no response from the city to any line complaints and correspondence. I filed a public records request to find out what happened with my complaint. I learned that the city had done nothing. The city wrote a letter to this vacation home rental owner and asked that they not do it again. There was no penalty, there is no enforcement, there is no accountability. I also found on my public records request that this property had had a previous complaint on October thirty-first, twenty-twenty. I filed my public records request on July tenth, twenty-twenty-one. The city responds to the October thirty-first complaint on July twelfth, nineteen twenty-one, asks the property owner kindly not to do that again. At this point, there is no enforcement system, there is no accountability for the city of twenty-nine Palms. Nobody's going to call the city to complain because it doesn't do anything, it's meaningless. And this is why you don't have any records of complaints that come into that system. Frankly, I think that the city has no business providing a permit and things until they have the will, the ability to enforce those plans, and they show that to their community members.
Thank you for your comments. Julie, did you want to speak?
I guess.
Okay.
I mean, I'm new to this party. Um, but I've had a house in twenty-nine Palms for almost thirty years. And I am, I live in San Francisco as well, I'm a little nervous probably to be in here. I just want to say, you know, I spent years dealing with full-time tenants who were hor- next door, full-time neighbors who were horrible, and then also some really great neighbors. I don't really understand why everyone thinks every Airbnb or V H R will have bad guests. I don't know if that's really the rule, it might be the exception. But I also think that having people coming in and out of your neighborhood, bought cars that you don't know, people staggering around, that feels really... I mean, I had choice to do my permit two years ago, and I opted for no. And I opted also because I know all these marines and local people who call me and want to rent full-time. And I'm more flexible, I don't make them sign a year-long lease, they can stay for four months or six months. But I just feel like it's safer. I kind of felt bad listening to the appeal information on both sides, because I can really feel both people's frustration. And I just wonder, isn't there a way for them to be able to agree that they're going to work together?
That has happened on occasion, when we've had appellant's and, um, the applicants agree that this was, you know, how they were going to handle certain situations going forward.
I mean, the one thing I was just wondering is, I keep reading about all these people who are not residents, who have no relationship to the community, the entire basin, just plunking down roots, buying up every square inch of space and planning to be absentee homes. I actually just purchased the land next to my house to keep it empty, because I have houses now all around me. But I wonder if an education program would work better for new, I don't know if this is another topic, like, maybe it's for your study session after, but I think like when you go to driving school and you learn what you're supposed to do and not do. I mean, what would happen if there was an education for all people who are coming to buy stuff with the intention of vacation home rental? So I don't think you should continue to approve them until you rewrite your code to accommodate more people's concerns.
Thank you, Julie. So I, um, agree with you that there is an opportunity to revise our code as it's written today, and I understand how you guys, you know, have your comments about it. Um, we're going to continue with the public hearing if anybody wants to speak on number two, but I, I just want you to understand that we do know that there needs to be some, you know, modifications to our code, thus the study session that we have later this afternoon. So, um, do I have any other further, um, wishes to speak on two? In the, in the graces of time, maybe somebody might say it as well, but I'd like to just kind of move forward, yeah, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for item two.
Madam Chair, if I could just make two points, um, there are actually applications that never make it to you. For some reason, they don't meet, uh, quote, our very strict definitions, uh, especially with regard to single-family homes. Something is, uh, some, you know, improvements were made to the house that, uh, were not permitted. So there are a lot that we turn away, you know? Um, and then on the, the second point of enforcement, uh, we are serious about enforcement, and we will be bringing a revocation to you in August.
Okay. I did have one more to speak on section two, Travis, but I close the public hearing?
Open it again. Open it again.
Okay. We're going to open item two for public hearing. If I can have... This is fun, all right. Vino?
That's good enough.
Okay.
I do have some public handouts. Can I give you all this, and if anybody in the conference needs this?
Maybe he wants to reference them.
Does my time start?
It did, yes.
Okay. My name is Vino LaGuardia, I'm a resident of the community. I live at seven one eight two nine twenty-nine Palm Highway. While we're on the subject of vacation rental, there's eight things you may not know about human trafficking. There's thirty-six percent increase. One in six of the endangered runaways in the U.S. are likely to become sex trafficking victims. It's a ninety-nine billion dollar industry. Forty point three million people worldwide are, are victims of human trafficking. Nearly one in five men, probably females, are human trafficking victims, males are. And majority are adults. My suggestion is that if anybody wants to own a vacation rental, they should take this mandatory training. I have no interest in a company called Desert Beacon. I have, uh, talked to the manager, and I have asked him to take these human trafficking classes before a permit be issued. They, they should prove that they have taken the classes, or hand you a form over, your certification, in order to a company that has taken it. Seven states mandate human trafficking awareness for those individuals working in the logging industry, and one of them is California. Sixteen states mandate that human trafficking awareness signs be posted, and one of them is California. Now, yes, tax dollars may be important, but health and safety of the community is more important than our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close item two, public hearing. I'm bringing it up here and for further discussion. Jason? You're not Jason.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, I tricked you, I was just seeing if you guys were paying attention.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Mendoza?
Just a couple quick observations. The city, the planning commission does not make policy. We don't decide the future of the city, that is the city council, they are elected. We are appointed to deal with land use issues. We are asked to write code for various specific things by the city council. When they do that, we have a study session, we make the suggested changes, then it can either go to another study session, but it has to go through a public hearing before it even goes up to the city council. Once it goes to the city council, they may have a study session, but it also has to go through a public hearing before the code becomes adopted. Okay? So just so you know, we don't make the rules. Not our job. We interpret the code the way we have been advised to by our city attorney and other land use attorneys. And again, I've said this before, irregardless of what my personal feelings may or may not be, it is my job as an appointed commissioner to follow the policies of, that have been given to us by the city council and by state law.
Sorry, Julie, we don't allow question and ask, answer.
First thing you do is you talk to city staff. Means Travis or Diane? Yes. So that's all I have at this point?
Thank you. Max?
I have a lot of things, but it's, it's a mute point because of the development code that we have in front of us. I, so, I will speak further when we get to the study session portion of our development code discussion.
Thank you. Khrushat?
Uh, Madam Chairperson, I'm going to save my general comments for the study session, because I think that's the best place for it, but I'd just like to reiterate what, uh, Mr. Mendoza said, you know, we apply the code. We are charged by the city council to apply the ordinance, apply this general plan, apply, apply any specific plans. Whatever our, and we have to make sure that we are impartial and that we apply it the same way across the board. And a lot of us, and I've worked with a lot of these people here, and they've gone out, they do their homework, they visit the sites, um, they do look at the areas to see what the character of the neighborhood is, and that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. So, um, I do understand that we need to revise and look at and look into, we are, we've been hearing you, you've been coming to, the public's been coming to tons of meetings to let us know how you feel about your community. Uh, because it is a process, study session is number one, so as the code is written now, do I have a motion from commissioners?
So I make a motion that we deny the appeal and approve the application for vacation home rental.
Aye, second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call vote?
Commissioner Khrushat?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Nay.
Vice Chair Palahna?
Aye.
Uh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Dixon?
Aye.
That's why I was like...
Chair Palahna, I'm sorry.
That's me, sir. Yeah, aye.
Okay, so four one, and that is, um, approved to deny the appeal, uh, application and approve the vacation home rental.
Okay, we'll be moving on to number, item number three, P C twenty-one twenty-two, V H R appeal for Cottonwood Drive. I'll go ahead and turn it over to staff.
They're in, they're in the, in the front. Oh, okay.
Oh, it's okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, so this is an application for appeal of a V H R permit. Um, the appellant is Wendy Toyama, the V H R applicant is Kai Mo Wong, and the agent for the applicant is Eric Menendez of Desert Beacon. The property is located at six nine three zero one Cottonwood Drive. Um, it's a two point two acre parcel, it is located, um, in the Indian Cove area. The property is designated residential single-family for lots per acre. So this is a location map, um, of the V H R. single-family for lots per acre. Um, so this is a location map, um, of the VHR, and then we have, um, a couple of photos of the structure. The appellant has cited the following reasons as basis for the appeal. Um, potential for increased noise and traffic in the area. Um, again, there have been no, uh, previous complaints to code enforcement regarding this property. Um, all required documents for the VHR application have been submitted. Uh, the applicant, um, is in compliance with the requirements of the development code for the VHR permit. Um, and actually, the, uh, uh, sorry, the safety inspection, um, for this property was completed this afternoon and it passed. So that, that item is completed. Um, and remediations for violating the requirements of the development code are to cite the applicant for the violations. Uh, we can choose to not renew the permit based on those violations or revoke the permit based on violations. Uh, so staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal and approve the application for the vacation home rental. Uh, that concludes the staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Diane? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for PC twenty-one twenty-two. We'll go ahead and start with our VHR applicant, Ms., uh, Mr. or Mrs. Wong.
Good afternoon Commissioners, I'm speaking on your behalf. My name is Anita Pecky.
Yes, representative.
Okay. Good afternoon. Uh, thank you for hearing my comment today. My name is Anita Pecky. I am a resident of Twenty-Nine Palms. I also work for Desert Beacon, which is located in Twenty-Nine Palms off Split Rock Avenue. Uh, we are a twenty-four-seven short-term property management company that serves property owners in the Marango Basin. I'm here today on behalf of Kai Mo Wong, the property owner of six nine three oh nine Cottonwood Drive, East of Montegista Drive in Twenty-Nine Palms. We manage this property. Uh, we have driven all the perimeter streets and did not see any active VHRs, um, in the immediate area, area of the property of Cottonwood. Um, you know, the Marango Basin is seeing a popular, you know, we've become very popular with our vacation area, for being a vacation area. Uh, this is due to the number of visitors going to the Joshua Tree National Park. Uh, with the lack of resources to support the visitors, um, in these areas, we've seen an increase of VHRs in the past year. Our high desert visitors help crate dogs for locals like myself and boost the revenue of our economy. By welcoming and encouraging our visitors to stay local and spend locally, this will help stimulate our economic growth within our community. As a resident of Twenty-Nine Palms, we support our neighbors. Uh, we have a lot in common with them. We believe in making our communities safe. We don't want riffraff, loud noise, outlandish behavior. Our responsibility as a property manager is to make sure this type of behavior does not go on. Uh, we take our good neighbor policy seriously by making sure that our occupants are aware and follow the local ordinances. Desert Beacon also has partnered with Noise Aware to help prevent noise complaints before they happen. If concerns arise with VHRs, we like to be a resource to the community by investigating the concern. We welcome VHR property owners and their neighbors to contact us directly. We ask the commissioners, um, to deny and not to approve the PC twenty-one twenty-two appeal to Cottonwood Drive property. I, I thank you kindly and for your show. So, thank you for hearing.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a question of the speaker.
Oh, um, we, sorry.
Do you actively act as agents for short-term rentals?
Yes.
So, when you receive a complaint, how long do you have to respond?
Uh, we usually respond within thirty minutes.
And what does the code say?
Uh, it's about, what, an hour? Usually it's an hour.
Second question is, I'm sure a lot of your guests come through Airbnb?
Yes, some of them do.
Uh, do they vet their guests?
Um, I, I want to say that they vet it out to-
Yes.
-to a point. And Eric can probably-
That's my side. Yeah, every guest is, is background screened through Airbnb. And if a guest posts independently, we also do a background screening process.
Okay, so Airbnb definitely does do that. I had been told that and I didn't know.
Yes.
Okay. And you do it for non-Airbnbs?
Yeah, yeah, we, we do have the option. We're working on a direct booking platform because what we really are about is, what we look at is Airbnb is taking twenty percent off every vacation rental in this basin. And as you know, that money doesn't, it just leaves the basin and goes to San Francisco. What we're working on and the purpose of our company is to try to eventually capture the return traffic where people come book directly, they can check in at our office with a photo shoot ID, we can background screen them ourselves, and basically cut Airbnb out of the equation to an extent.
Okay. All right, that's my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that was-
I have a question.
Oh, we have one more from Commissioner. Sorry.
So if, if your office gets a complaint on the Airbnb, do you file that complaint then with the city? I'm sorry. Do you notify the city of that complaint? Oh, we address it instantly. We, we- Right, I'm, but I'm saying, do you then notify the city that there was a complaint? Uh, we've never, we've never had a complaint in Twenty-Nine Palms. We actually address complaints for people who aren't even our properties.
Yes.
All the time, people walk into our office and say, hey, we've got this unlicensed, or they don't even know, they think it's a real Airbnb and so forth. So we'll look it up on the map, we'll search air DNA, we'll pull it up and say, yeah, sure enough, this isn't, this doesn't even have a license to operate, and we refer them to Travis and Shelley. Well, that was, that was why I asked. If you refer, if you get, if you get a complaint in whatever to your office, do you refer it to the city?
Yes.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. For a non-Airbnb. We address our own companies, of course, if there were one. Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and call up, um, the appellant, Wendy.
Good afternoon, my name is Wendy Toyama. Um, can you pull up the map, please? So I live at six nine two five zero Cottonwood Drive. I'm directly across from that, um, location. That is a proposed VHR. Um, I moved back to Twenty-Nine Palms three years ago as a single parent with my daughter, in the hopes of raising her in a safe environment, moving from Kentucky. Um, I grew up here. Wonderful experience. Wanted to provide my daughter with the same opportunities that I received. Um, when I bought this, uh, my residence two years ago, that location was a long-term residence. Um, and I had no idea that the new owners were going to turn it into a, a VHR. Um, just recently, I also found out that this location is also a VHR. Um, again, I was oblivious to knowing about anything about VHRs when I purchased my residence. Um, I bought it with the intent of, it's a, it's a great location. Um, it's kind of off the beaten path, not very much traffic. Um, there, you're right, there has been no increase in traffic and noise because it's not currently a VHR. Um, so I wouldn't have had to report anything. Um, but I will tell you, very serious story, about three, four weeks ago, a car was parked outside my home. Um, I came home with my daughter, and I, I should have called the sheriff, but I did not. Um, I instead went to my parents' residence, who also live in Indian Cove. What a VHR is going to bring are unknown cars. We are off the beaten path, and that just, it scares me and it scares my daughter. Again, it's just the two of us. And so with increased traffic of people that I don't know, I don't feel comfortable with, um, what am I to do? I'm like, I, I am very opposed to this and I, I'm very fearful. I really am. Um, like I said, that was an eye-opening experience of having a, I don't know what that car was doing. I took down the license plate, um, you know. But again, I did not go to the sheriff's because I didn't know what would happen. I don't know why that car was there. Maybe they were just, I don't know, hanging out. But I mean, it was at night. So again, I am very wary of having a VHR that close to my residence. Um, and I would have, if I had known it would be, you're looking into the future, hindsight's twenty twenty, I would not have bought my residence there because it will deplete, if I do, do decide to move after she's left, I will, the resale of my home will go down. It'll be harder to sell. Um, and everything that I loved about that residence and that appealed to me, the subclusion, the safe area, um, it's, it's gone. So I, um, permanently, I understand, you know, the benefit of VHRs. However, as a single parent, I, I, I just hope that you guys will make the right decision, um, in knowing that we're literally right across from this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for the appellant? Thank you. Okay, so we do have our, um, three-minute public comments. I'll go ahead and call them up as I receive them. Anita?
I'm sorry.
You're okay? Okay. Uh, Julie?
I think I would learn more as the time flies. So I have a question related to code, which is, um, with all the things that are being talked about, it's obvious that people and the commission have an idea that some of the code should be looked at against. So when there's so much kind of backlash about the code as it is, why are things considering to be approved and not paused until the code is reconsidered?
It's the current law, it's the current code written right now.
I know, but if the code is showing that it's not maybe working, or that the world changed and it needs to be updated, then how can the old code be applied to new applications?
That's our study session. That's, yeah.
But you're approving stuff, so.
Because it's the way that it's written. I can't say like, I'm giving you a speeding ticket for going fifty-five in a forty when I'm going to change that because we need to change that. It's as it is now. So if you're going-
I wouldn't say that a, a few will unveil the permit.
I'm just, I'm trying to give an example that's relatable for-
We don't have, we don't have the authority.
We don't have that authority to go, hey, I can get you on this yet, like, or I can stop this, this-
May, may I? I just wondered, like, do, do this, like, how does that work?
Yeah, all, um, Mendoza, he has tons of experience, so he'll help us out.
First of all, again, this body does not make policy. To call a moratorium is direction and decision of the city council. We don't have that authority. The city council has directed us to have a study session to look at issues that has come up. That study session is tonight. Okay?
So we can't cease unless we got that stoppage from our city council.
So this is now going back to the city council, okay.
But they've, they've said, I recognize this as an issue, so let's go ahead and get like, study session, which we're going to talk about regulation. How would you do that? How could that be applied? Well, did we consider this? How could that affect that? And that's like, how that study session goes through. We'll find little regulations that we may want to suggest to city council. City council, city council will review that, but before that, there's that public hearing. We'll get input. We've had tons of input. We know exactly what you guys want. How does that apply to code? Okay, city council, here it is. And they're like, okay, let me see, let me see, how does that work? Okay, get guidance. They seek, you know, they seek their guidance from our attorneys, and then it's written into a code, which we would then, we, we would have it brought before us to adopt that code.
So given that you all had said you haven't been to other meetings before, since whenever this, before this one, what, like, what's the time process here approximately? Like, can there be another session way in advance? I mean, will more things go up for being reviewed for appeals and things, can it be months and months and months before the city council, like, consider the code revisions?
That's a great question. We'll see what's, when city council can address, you know, if they're going to go through with them, memor- memoritorium, moratorium.
Moratorium.
Mora, moratorium.
Like, is it a ten months, twelve months?
No.
No, it, it's definitely on their radar. They're tracking, like, we understand completely. It's just the technicality of where we're sitting in that. Yeah, thank you.
I, I'm not sure how long it takes for the city to enact a moratorium. Once that moratorium, if that moratorium is enacted, at that point, we stop approving. So anything in the pipeline at that point is on hold. Now, I will say, when there became talk of a moratorium, there was a land office rush on people turning in VHR applications.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so we're going to proceed. We have Cindy Bernard.
We actually just have one question.
Just before you start, um, if you could go to the podium, I just want to make sure that we're allowing, um, our staff, wonderful Shelley, to be able to keep our timer.
Yeah, it's, it's just a question. Um, so we've been talking about the code, and as we all know, I, I disagree with your interpretation of the code. I suspect that the one person who's voting, um, in favor of the appeals also disagrees with your interpretation of the code. And respectfully, Commissioner Mendoza, when Bill Easter was here, he disagreed with your interpretation of the code, and he was also around on the planning commission when the code was written. But my question, I just have one question. Has the city attorney ever advised that the number of VHRs in a neighborhood should not be considered in assessing residential character? Has that question been asked?
So I think what you're referencing is in her, um, the presentation from staff, correct, when it was mentioned that-
Yeah, you know, you never put the code up here, so anybody can actually see the code. There's that. I, I think people would be really interested to see what the code is and how it's actually written.
The code can be reached on our websites accessible, that you can, um, view that. But-
It's needed.
So what she's referencing is that it, she's just stating that it does not have a limitation. We're aware of that, and we have to have study session to change the regulation.
I don't understand who said that. I don't mean to interrupt. My question is very specific. Has the city attorney advised that the number of VHRs should not be considered in assessing residential character per your code? That's my question. In other words, the city attorney looked at it when it was written a long time ago, when there were no VHRs in the city. Now there are two, almost two hundred of them. Has anybody asked about the number of VHRs and residential character to the city attorney for a rule? It's very specific. That's all I have to say.
Since the code was written, to my knowledge, no.
Thank you.
But again-
It is something that Travis is tracking. You sent that email, and it's just something that pert, your exact question that you want answered. It, we can get guidance, but we're doing the whole looking at the code itself, going, what does community want? What kind of limits can we set? It's, it's going to be a lot of guidance from our lawyers as well.
One more thing. The more touring votes that brought us twenty-fourth and twenty-one, which has been helping you.
August twenty-fourth for the memor-
Sorry.
Mem- more. Why do I keep saying ma?
You might be right about that.
Sorry, maybe. Okay. Um, we have another request for Vino.
Thank you.
Oh, I just have to ask you, um, you checked that you're going to speak in favor of number three? This is item number three. Do you want me to change that, or are you speaking in favor of it?
I don't mind you granting a vacation rental license, but I just wanted to clarify what Commissioner Red, Red Mendoza asks. Desert Beacon, does Airbnb vet Atlants? Uh, I want people who come and speak here to speak the truth, so that you all can make intelligent decisions on behalf of the city and the community. Now, Airbnb does not vet Atlants. I have rented homes from Airbnb, and basically Airbnb has never vetted me. I have rented another home in San Diego from after. Yes, he vetted me. He called me up. He wanted to see every person that's staying in this house. He wanted to see my kids, my wife, for that individual, everybody, talk to everybody before he said yes. We manage two hotels, Oasis and Inns Suites, and America's Best Valuing, total of hundred and nine rooms. We have just over three pages of do not rent this people. Now, yes, some of the people come from OC, come from LA, and I said, listen, not in my backyard, go and do your daddy work. In Orange County, go and do it in LA. When you come there, you'll enjoy the park, you'll stay, come stay. Now, don't tell me that the vacation rentals are immune from do not rent this. Don't tell me that vacation rentals won't have human trafficking problems. Okay? So basically, I'm not asking you to change the code, but I'm sure the planning commission can put a condition saying, we'll just grant you this approval, but you have to do the human trafficking classes. If you don't do it, you cannot open up a business. Or if you want, give it to a company like Desert Beacon. Eric has told me he has done the classes. That's fine. At least if something goes wrong, we know it is not happening now. At least if something goes wrong, we know it is not happening in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, that was the last filled-out sheet. Did I have any more comments? Okay, I'm going to close public hearing for item three. Bring it up for discussion.
Again, Madam Chairman, person, I'm going to hold it for the study session, but I would remind everybody that when you come up for comment, it's not a question and answer period. It's a chance to make your comment and then end it in three minutes. If you want to stay for the study session, stay for the study session.
Thank you. I do hope we have you stay for our study session.
I rented, uh, in January, uh, a vacation home rental in Big Bear, and by vetting, the owner of the property asked me some questions, had me respond to the questions, sent her my photocopy ID, and that was the vetting. They're not doing a background check where they're finding out you're a, you know, criminal or wanted felon or whatever. They're not doing a background check like that, that I am aware of. I could be wrong, but the vetting process for me was answering five questions, what my intent was to say and all this other stuff, and then sending a copy of my ID, and that was it.
Mendoza?
I'm sure this comment's not going to be popular, but I wonder if we require background checks on long-term renters and/or hotel guests?
They do, they do, they do a credit application check, which would...
That may be a credit, that doesn't mean they check Megan's law website or anything else.
Also true, but you do, they do, there is some sort of...
There's a financial background check, yes, but, um, and there is, it, certain things in your background may come up when you do long-term, depending on who you're using for running your background, but yes.
Most of them do a credit check, I'm aware of that, but I don't know of any that require any type of background check.
Hotel guests, right.
Yeah, exactly.
Jason?
I'm obviously going to save mine for the study session as well, because I obviously, we know we have mixed opinions on certain things. I mean, the community is bringing good points up, um, and we understand that, so I think that's where it should be addressed at that point in time.
Thank you. So we've heard item three. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we deny the appeal and approve the, uh, vacation home rental request.
Aye, second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Commissioner Kuchat?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Nay.
Vice Chair Dixon?
Aye.
Chair Paul Hana?
Aye.
Four, one, approved. Okay, we'll go ahead and move to PC twenty-one, twenty-four, the VHR appeal for Hook Tree Road.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, so this is, um, an appeal of vacation home rental, um, of the, sorry. We had, um, the VHR applicant is Allison Hendricks. Um, we had...
Yeah, move it up a little closer.
Sorry. The VHR applicant is Allison Hendricks. Um, we had eleven appeal applications filed, so we'll have eleven appellants that will be speaking, apox, possibly. Um, the location is four, six, nine, four, Hook Tree Road. Um, it is a, just under a half-acre parcel, and the zoning designation is residential single-family, four dwelling units per acre. Um, so this is, again, a location map, um, showing the VHR location, um, a couple of photos of the property. Is it a conflict of interest for you? The appellants have cited the following reasons as basis for appeal: safety of children, a decrease in property values, increased law enforcement activity, creating a lack of affordable housing, uh, and creating a commercial atmosphere. The applicant has submitted all the required documents for the, uh, application process. The safety inspection has been completed and passed. Uh, the application, I'm sorry, the applicant is in compliance with all the requirements of the development code for VHR permits, and there have been, um, no complaints to code enforcement regarding this property. Again, again, remediations for violating the requirements of vacation home rental code are citing the applicant for the violations, um, not renewing their permit, or, um, revoking the permit based on the violations. Um, so the recommendation is that the planning commission deny the appeal and approve the application for the vacation home rental.
Thank you. Any questions of staff to, or of commissioners to staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for PC twenty-one, twenty-four. Okay, um, as Diane stated, we do have the eleven, um, appellants who would like to speak. So we're going to go ahead and do VHR applicant first, and then I'll call them up as they're listed on the sheet that I have. And, um, appellants and applicants do have unlimited speaking. Um, if you all kind of have a general consensus, I, I assure you, we understand, um, but it is your, you know, you have your right to speak. As it's been pointed out, it's really not like question answering for us to kind of like, go back and forth. Uh, we can answer a few questions should they come up. Um, so we'll go ahead and proceed with Allison Hendricks.
Hi, um, I'm Allison Hendricks. I am the owner of forty-six, ninety-four Hook Tree Road. Um, I apologize if I'm like, repeating a lot of things that I said, but I put a lot of time and effort and anxiety into writing this letter, and I, I weren't able to, um, express to my neighbors that, like, I do understand the concerns. There's like, the concerns are, you know, they're worth something. Um, okay, I'm not being said. Uh, it seems a short-term rental has not happened before in this neighborhood. As such, I'd like to help comment the concerns my neighbors have by being as transparent and open as possible. Um, the platform I intend to use to rent my home is Airbnb. I've previously rented out my home in New Jersey during the summer months using Airbnb with no issues. Um, that home is a half mile from the beach, on a dead-end residential street with seven other homes occupied by full-time residents, and they're maybe twenty feet apart from each other. Um, I have thirty-four host reviews on Airbnb's website, all of which are excellent. Uh, my neighbors there in Jersey never had a single complaint about any of the tenants, and they're like, New Jersey people, so like, they would tell me if there was a problem. During that time, so in New Jersey, like, similar to this property, I would be using this house frequently. Like, this is not, I, I'm, you know, three hours, two hours and thirty-six minutes from the home, like, in my other house, so like, this house is used by me and my boyfriend. I know you guys have seen us there, you were super, sorry, I'm not going to drop. Yeah, super welcoming and, you know, nice, so like, I hope we can keep that. Um, but I do want to address like, the specific concerns they brought up. Um, so the safety of children and families. So this is the primary reason I'm utilizing Airbnb, because they offer like, atomic protections both for hosts and for guests. Um, the Airbnb platform does perform background checks on both hosts and guests. They check state and county criminal records as well as national sex offender registries and terrorist lists, if we can provide you this information from their, their platform. With this knowledge, Airbnb can determine who can utilize their platform and who cannot. Unlike the long-term rental applicant, who cannot be denied housing based solely on their sex offender status, a short-term applicant through Airbnb could be denied on such basis. Um, I'm only using Airbnb, so Airbnb does get vetted this way. Um, Airbnb also has a rating system. Um, this means when, sorry, this means when someone applies to rent my place, I'm able to see their, their star rating. Um, it's based on five stars, and I don't rent my house to anybody with less than four point five stars. Like, I don't, this is my home, I bought it with my hard-earned money, like, I'm not having to track my house. Um, property values were mentioned as a concern. Um, I'm, I'm not in real estate, I don't, you know, I can't really speak to this in any sort of specific way, but having looked for a property to buy in Twenty-Nine Homes, everything's going for over market value, uh, they're all going for over this price. And again, yes, those houses are probably being bought by people who want to do short-term rentals. That's not lost on me, but I don't think in selling your home, you're going to, you know, have issues with, with it moving. People, people are buying up homes here. Um, law enforcement activity, uh, again, I'm not a law enforcement employee, but I don't believe an increase in law enforcement activity is related to the rental status of a home. A short-term tenant, a long-term tenant, and a permanent resident could all be disruptive and bad neighbors. Um, however, at minimum, Airbnb does the background checks and the rating system to keep this probability lower than that of long-term tenants or even permanent residents. Airbnb is able to weed out anyone with a questionable background, and then additionally, I'm able to decline anyone like, if I don't like their face, like, you can't rent my house. So there's that. Um, if a short-term tenant is disruptive, they can be made to leave the property, unlike long-term tenants or permanent residents, where an eviction process can take several months to a year. Don't have my home in New Jersey, pointing in terms of long-term, like, the eviction process is not quick. Um, sorry. In addition, I will utilize some decibel meters and entrance cameras to monitor the activity of the guests, and I heavily and strongly encourage my neighbors to get in touch with myself or police if they're experiencing any issues with the tenants. Um, in regards to investors and commercial atmosphere, uh, I'm by no means a big commercial investor. Again, I'm going to utilize this house myself at the time. Um, I feel short-term rentals owned by homeowners are actually better for the community than hotels. Um, hotels and even apartment condos for permanent residents are most frequently owned by people living out of town, out of state, out of the country sometimes. Um, the profit these commercial investors make does not benefit the community, unlike during a short-term rental, where you kind of, you live there and you work there, you stay there, that money is spent and invested locally. Um, multiple vacation properties were mentioned several times today also. Um, I don't know how many short-term rentals the city will allow. Uh, however, I have read the city's short-term rental ordinance several times and feel they are taking thoughtful and thorough steps to ensure that short-term rentals remain beneficial for the community and are not disruptive with neighbors. Uh, in closing, I sincerely hope the city approves my application for the short-term rental. In addition, I really hope me and my neighbors are able to maintain the inviting and warm relationship we started. I welcome the opportunity to demonstrate that a short-term rental is not a detriment to the neighborhood. I also welcome any neighbor with additional questions, comments, or concerns to speak to me. I provide my cell phone. I can give that to you if you want it. Or you're welcome to knock on my door when I receive a car on the driveway, driveway. Uh, I truly look forward to Diane's note over one more and to be in the great neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, some of these, um, appellants may not be here to speak. Um, did you have something else? Oh. Commissioner? No. Thank you. Um, is Scott Sedmak here? No? Jose Montoya?
Oh, I already spoke to the city council over a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I made my feelings. You know, I aired my feelings, but this gentleman here says that you don't make policy, you don't do, you don't have the power to, uh, make policy, but you're voting here on these, uh, pardons. That's policy to me, because right now, this property here is not eligible for, uh, um, vacation rental, and this is my property right next door. But as soon as you vote on it tonight, that property will be allowed to be a vacation rental. So why do you say that you don't make policy? I don't understand. Thank you.
To address your, um, comments, sir, it's, it's something we are going to have a study session to suggest what we believe, based off hearing everybody's complaints or concerns, or just everything that we've heard, it's suggested, so we don't like, make that, we suggest it, city council will then do that. But as far as approving or denying a permit, that is within our jurisdiction.
And it's based off of the code that is written to date, which is what we discussed in the past. To have it changed is the venting process that we're going to try to start going through after our sessions today, and then forward it up through the commission, or the planning commi, or the council, for us to come back down and then change it.
We have a Gerald Garver? Lola Bits? Joanne Connors?
I'm here.
Oh, Lola? Oh, did you want to speak? No? Okay. Uh, did I pass over somebody else that was already? No?
I'm Joanne.
Joanne?
I'd like to say so.
Okay.
Yes, please.
I live right down the street from there. I'm a widow. I now live with my daughter, who has lived in with me, along with her three small childrens. My grandkids live with me. I'm opposed to this because I have, my mother used to live in Santa Ana, where there were A, Airbnbs that were not vetted for sex offenders registered, that have, people that perhaps register with the schools and live so far from schools. My grandkids walk to the bus stop, which is three hundred feet from my front door, and I am really concerned about their safety, along with my own and my daughter, where a bunch of women in the house, and when there are strange cars in the neighborhood, and we've had people speeding, the speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour, and nobody does that. All these truck drivers and UPS drivers and whatnot, they go speeding up and down the street. Kids ride bicycles in the street. They ride their skateboards. They roller skate in the street. We set cones out and they're ignored. So, yeah, we're all concerned about our safety. I've lived in this house since nineteen eighty-seven, in the same house. I'm really, really opposed to these Airbnb's and taking our neighborhoods away from us. There's also an Airbnb being run, I don't know if it's legal or not, at Motel Six right here in Twenty-Nine Homes, and they can keep it on the highway, as far as I'm concerned. Don't take our neighborhoods away from us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Connors. Uh, Thomas Pickett? Not here? Um, we did receive the letters that everybody had sent in, just, if they're not here to speak. Dawn Hurlbert? Kayla Peterson? Colin McKay?
Yeah. Uh, I don't want to really reiterate what everyone else has already said about, um, the denying appeals. I just hope that change can be made with codes on limiting actual, um, locations and limiting how many can go into it. Uh, one thing I do pride ourselves in having, living in that area, is that we are probably the safest neighborhood. Now that we have two that are coming up, pretty much one behind the other, um, it kind of limits, like, our protection and knowing where our kids can run around and go, I live across the street from this one, and, uh, you know, I'm really going to have to watch out for my kids now and just need to know where they're at, and I can't let them go down the street to their friend's house. Uh, so I just hope change can be made.
Thank you for your comments. Travis Fowler?
I appreciate you guys coming, so, um, I did speak to the city council, uh, at the last city council meeting regarding this, Miss Andrews, wherever you're at. Uh, we're not people that don't invite welcoming neighbors, I promise you that, and I also promise you that when you guys vote to accept this, you're in few minutes, but we'll be nicer when it comes in the neighborhood. What I find misleading is the city's standpoint on this. By sending us a form that says appeal, they would give the impression that we actually have an opportunity to appeal something with an actual fighting chance. Uh, so you mentioned a little bit ago, which you guys have sent, some of them to denial. I'd love to see that ratio compared to what's been approved based on the stringent criteria that's required by the city to become a vacation rental. My perspective is, if the owner of the property does everything that's in your guys' guidance right now, you guys will grant things are permitted to be in Airbnb. And if I'm wrong, please, please let me know, because that would pretty much negate the fact that we, as a community, have an appeal process, um, in this situation. Uh, I find it interesting that people on the planning commission board are asking questions of the public regarding Airbnb or, uh, vacation home rentals. I mean, this has obviously been a hot topic for some time now, and I always thought you guys would have educated yourselves a little more in asking whether or not Airbnb vets people that are coming in and out of the, of the properties, because it's obviously something that affects the community in a passionate way. My recourse, if you guys vote me down, I think, based on my, my papers, we pay you guys three hundred dollars. Uh, not you guys specifically, but the city's twenty-nine costs, three hundred dollars, so then I can actually be heard at, at a higher level with the city council, who, if I'm understanding correctly, is the one that can really make a decision in this matter. Everybody that's sitting here basically says, "We've interpreted it one way." And I believe we'll see a motion, a second, three, four eyes, and one nay when ours comes up here in just one second. We maybe spoke previously and made a recommendation that maybe some kind of emergency stay should be put into place. Maybe that's something that should be considered rather than, as this gentleman said, an onslaught of, okay, man, this is more important than this was brought up. On my slide, the six points we made, the sixth point was oversaturation. It didn't make the slide, probably just a minor, I'm sure. But within two weeks of the last meeting, we got another letter for, as Colin said, right here. So that puts two of my neighbors with a vacation home rental on, next door to them and right behind them. This is Montoya being one, and Dawn is Spencer, and yeah. These are the, these are the topics and these are the issues that the city council needs to hear from you guys and that somebody needs to start making some major strides in preventing the ideas of, we're promoting you from our perspective to put us at ease as citizens. The Mrs. Hendricks, her recourse, what I understand would be, if you guys are saying correctly, the city attorney has basically advised you guys that you can't deny a permanent. Not overwhelmingly, Mr. Walker was able to say his name, but you guys physically capable of it. But as a cap, as a commission, if you did do that, I'm assuming that that means that you guys fear legal reparations from Mrs. Hendricks and the city would then be liable. Is that correct?
Correct.
I get to pay $300 to have her be heard again. The person purchasing the house in London become a vacation rental. Could potentially sue you for the loss of, and it's her right, you know why? The policy is inept right now. It's completely inept. I feel for them. If I were an investor, who Miss Hendricks bought this property, I doubt she had any idea, any idea once, whatsoever, that there would be this much of an adverse reaction to her in that neighborhood. She felt like she was making a business investment, she and her boyfriend, to, to long-term make money on and also enjoy a part-time job. It's not fair to people investing in permanent homes, just as it's not fair to those that are living there. So I would just encourage the commission and the council, who undoubtedly will be listening to you guys. And I would also say one more time, I know we've been told this isn't a question and answer session, thank you, sir. We've had questions and comments come back, thank you, sir. You gentlemen and lady, you have a tough job, I did. And you guys aren't making oodles and oodles of money to sit up there and be criticized by us. But you are entrusted, as appointed officials, to make decisions that are in the best interest of the city of 29 Palms. Okay? The city, that's the residents that live here day in and day out, that coach the kids at the Olympic field, that run the local businesses, that have neighbors that they know all their names and borrow sticks and butter from. And it's not to say that Miss Hendricks wouldn't be one of those neighbors. I, like I said, welcome the neighbors, I fully believe you're going to be given the permit to operate my neighborhood. But there's a second one, which I'm going to see, and I'll get another letter. I'll come back, I'll sit down, I'll speak, but please help us to understand it is not falling on deaf ears and that some action will take place. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for your comments. Again, August, August 24th, city council will have that voting power to stop the permit. So that's, that will take place then. Andrew Goodwin? Not present? Okay, and then I have one to speak, and that is Efremova? Ef... I just said this, Efremova.
So was that the end of the appellants?
Correct.
So now we're on the bottom?
Yes.
Yeah, I really, I'm going to say a couple of words about, I would like to say a couple of words about short-term rentals. So I travel a lot with my family around the world. In general, we visited around 100 short-term rentals. We always stay in short-term rentals, not in hotels, because hotels are not family-friendly. And to stay in short-term rentals, it's more safe for families. And I know it, and I stay only in, about traffic, like previous speakers say. It's not true about traffic, because when you live here, you have two or three cars for families. And I leave my house and come back around eight times 10 a day to bring my kids to activities, to school, you know, come back home, et cetera. But when I stay in short-term rentals, I leave early morning to explore surrounding area, surrounding area, and come back during the evening, just once. And family renting just one car in their airport for the whole family. It's not two free cars driving all, all full day. It's just one car, drive maybe two times a day. Short-term rentals, it's not about the bad clients, bad guests, it's about the hosts. How host owners or managers takes care about it. Always, when we stayed in a short-term rentals and when we had some problems, owners take action very quickly and decide our problems also very quickly. It's a, when you travel around the world, for example, we visited Japan, Spain, France. We traveled more than 20 cities in California, Utah, Florida, and other states. The hosts are friendly and they take cares, take care of their, their guests. Except of hotels, there are no kitchen, I can't feed my kids there. And if the whole United States decide, let's deny or decline the whole short-term rentals, it will be the big problem for all of us to travel in the United States or around the world. And a couple of words about market value, that some people say it's going down because you have a short-term rental. It's not true. You can, it's not true. You can ask any real estate agent and you will give opposite opinion. But if you have a permanent neighbors who smoke marijuana or something, you will, it will be much harder to sell your house.
Thank you. Okay, without any other further requests to speak, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it up here for further discussion. Anybody? Okay. Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make a little bit of history. Yeah, six years ago, when the issue of vacation home rentals, and I do want to distinguish between VROB as a company and, what's the other one?
Airbnb.
Airbnb as a company, VHR is what we're discussing. The city had the foresight to say, "We're going to have to deal with this issue." Okay? And back when Joshua Tree was the Wild West, because the county of San Bernardino didn't have a regulation place, 29 Palms did. I don't think anybody expected the popularity of Joshua Tree National Park and 29 Palms to go to the extent that it did. Can the ordinance be improved? Yes, it can. But I do want to say, the term, the regulation was inept. The regulation was very good at the time that it was written, because it dealt with a lot of things. And a lot of people, and this, this city had the foresight to put that in place. And it's been in place for six years. We'll discuss it. It's been in place for six years, and it's only been the last two years that we've dealt with the influx. Yeah. But it's been in place, so it's like... So anyways, that's the only thing I wanted to add.
Thank you. Max?
I don't have anything.
Thank you.
As I've said numerous times, I'm willing to change the code. I think there are things that need to be changed. And I will say again, our hands are tied by law. There are findings that have to be made. I'm sure it seems like, oh, it's already decided. That's not the case. Staff follows the code as far as permitting them. And unless we make a specific finding that something has not met that code, we don't have the legal right to deny it. Just like staff doesn't have the legal right to deny it if they've met all the criteria of the code. Now, tonight, we are going to have a study session to work on changing this code so that it's much more in what people want. So please understand that. Nobody up here is trying to be a hard case. It's just, it's no different than if one of these nice deputies out here stopped you and you, and you were obviously drunk, he doesn't have a choice but to arrest you, because that's the law. And if he doesn't, then he's going to be in a bunch of trouble. Unfortunately, it is like that with us. If we don't apply our codes, is what gets us sued. By land use attorneys, by appellants, by applicants, just that simple. Do not think you're not being heard. You are. You have gone to the city council, as we have recommended, and now they've come back and said, "Do this study session." And we will. And we will come back, maybe to a second or third study session. Then we go to a public hearing, then it can go up to the city council, they may send it back. But it is a process. It is not something that can be done overnight, whether it's something we want to do or not. There have been issues I have had with the city that, yeah, I want to see changed right then, but it's a process, unfortunately. It's the way it is. So you are being heard, I know most of you. And I'm sure most of you know me. I do get upset when people attack my integrity, because I spend an incredible amount of time trying to be fair and trying to do my job as I am required to. So, I'll save the rest of my comments for the study session.
Thank you. Jason?
All right, so I have to say, I have to agree with Commissioner Mendoza, it's true. And I know most of you as well, and I know when it comes to our town or our roads, our neighborhood, we get upset about these things. And I have to say, you coming out here today in the past month and fighting these appeals has gone unnoticed. So now the commission is going to bring it up to the council, and the council is hopefully going to tell us, change that direction because of your voice. So don't think that what you're doing here tonight has, you know, gone on deaf ears, because it hasn't. Once again, our opinions of what they should be, what they shouldn't be, is not for us to decide. It's based on the code that is written to date, even if the code was written six years ago. That's why you're here today to address those, we're here to address them, and then hopefully change them for the better. So hopefully tonight, we'll start that process in doing that. That's all I have.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make the motion that we deny the appeal and approve the VHR permit.
So it's not the same people, I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote?
Commissioner Khrushat?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Nay.
Vice Chair Dixon?
Aye.
Chair Palahana?
Aye.
4-1, approved to deny the appeal and approve the vacation home rental.
Okay, discussion of potential action items?
Ms. Chairman, could we have a short recess, please?
Yes, that's fine. So we'll come...
Sure, five minutes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes is fine.
Okay.
Resess, five minutes.
Isle breaks.
It's very hot in here, yes.
Yeah.
It's getting hotter here.
Keep pushing it down, yeah.
We're being recorded? We're being recorded? I can't stop it. I have no control over closing that, I mean, please.
In my neighborhood. That's fine. That just means we got to get out of here.
Probably not tonight.
That's fine. Wait, how long? It's got to be less. I'm already missing my travel. It is, right? Are we able to go out there? He's doing it off of, he's doing it, my, someone's calling. He's doing it off of emotion. And that's what, because I want to figure this. It's my idea of it, my dishes. Now I have to, you know, why? You know, we're not really, I can say, say, some, that is, they're, these other. I should stay. Saying that, I'm like, I'm like, I'm good.
Deal with it. Me and my wife, I can tell you, we are, I lose sleep at night. A lot of these guys. People that try to do things and how to deal with it. You have to be honest, right? No, people are not honest. Take it from me. I just, I like to do it, but the problem is, it is, it's not just, it is, it's not just making. Yeah, I mean, I have, I have a vacation room. I also have next to, I got the worst neighbors, I'm getting off next to them. Actually, ladies, I'm, boom, 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 boom music, and all the neighbors. But it's not my people. And I pay for it because all my neighbors, they're always telling me, all of them, me. There are guys who are annoying, I don't call them, I don't have to call the police. I mean, that's related to three, four, five, they're like, I know, I know. Like, yeah, well, you know, now there are three calls, it used to be two calls, now there are three. Russ, I got one, I got one here, sometimes I say, what can I do? What can I do? Turn my TV up a little bit, turn the radio up? I don't know how many days they stay, you know, they do, we, I didn't want to go.
Okay, that's been our five minutes. If I can have everybody back in their chairs, Mendoza to the dice. We're going to go ahead and continue our meeting, please, thank you. As we continue through our agenda, we have discussion of potential action items, there are none. Community Development Director updates?
Madam, in the interest of time, I'll forego that update. Just say that a lot of time spent this past week has been on the illegal marijuana growth that the city is facing, especially the two homes that were more or less burnt down. So there's a lot going on, on the code enforcement side, so just letting everybody know that, yes, we're dealing with VHRs, but a lot of other stuff is going on in the city too, so...
Thank you for...
And I will say this, we are working with a hotel that's looking to come into town.
Oh, hotel, okay.
With them today.
Oh, nice. Okay, so we'll move on into our study session.
Okay, so just a little bit of background. So just a little bit of background before we get into additional restrictions and regulations. Some of these came up at the last council meeting, others from staff. Probably there's fifty to a hundred more potential restrictions and regulations, even as I was walking over here. Well, how about limiting to lot size, that you need two and a half acres or five acres before you have a short-term rental? Well, that gives you more space between your neighbors, but it also forces, you know, vacation home rentals into more rural areas, which typically don't have paved roads and sewer services and things like that. So in every instance, there may be an unintended consequence in passing a rule or regulation. So you really have to think that through. So vacation home rental, that's twenty-nine Palm speak for short-term rental. Probably the rest of the world knows, labels it as short-term rental. Again, just a reminder, only allowed in detached, single-family dwellings. So some of the ones that we denied may have been, you know, two separate houses, but they were still connected by a roof. And that did not qualify as separate detached. Only applies to homes rented thirty consecutive days or less. So if you rent thirty-one days or more, you can be on Airbnb. It's not considered a short-term rental at that point. They are permitted within any land use zoning district, requires a permit or license to operate and renewed annually. We're trying to change our terminology a little bit, mainly because of this new management software. We got a permit is something that's typically issued one time, you know, like a building permit, or a license is something that's generally renewed. That also follows kind of state language. And then the city only permits VHRs within city limits. We've got a lot of comments, some from people out in the county. They may have a twenty-nine Palm city address, but they're in Wonder Valley or Desert Heights, and we do not permit vacation home rentals in those areas. That's done by the county, any of the unincorporated areas. Again, this was all talked about during Diane's presentation. Building safety inspection, certified that the septic tank is in good working order, insurance coverage, assigned with a contact number, posted in a visible location from the street. I don't know too many other cities that are doing that. I certainly know Palm Springs isn't doing it, and they have a lot of vacation home rentals. And any unpermitted building renovations or expansion must be brought up to code. So those are kind of, kind of the basics there. This is a map created last week of our latest VHR data. We have a hundred and fifty active ones, correct, Shelley, I believe? Yeah, and I believe fifty pending. That's not typical pending. As Commissioner Mendoza mentioned, mentioned moratorium, and then now there's a rush. This isn't typical of the volume that we see, you know, certainly in community development. And you can see here that the dots are different sizes. It's because it's based on the parcel. You know, it's not a dot, you know, not an address. It's the actual size of the parcel. As it was been mentioned several times, when we apply the development code, they must be objective, not discriminatory, applied equitably and fairly, legally defensible, implementable by staff and technology, available to the city. And I'll kind of get into that in a minute. So I'll go through these suggestions for greater restrictions and regulations on VHRs. I'm sure there are many more that will come about. If you're totally against VHRs, and then they should be banned in the city, then obviously these don't apply. You would want a total ban. These are just additional restrictions and regulations that were talked about. And I'll go through each one of these. And I know it's been a long night, so I'll try not to dwell, but just provide enough information for everyone. So one that was mentioned at the council meeting was mandatory training requirement for VHR owners and agents. This is a formal training class for both owners and agents, so both would be required to attend. At the class, training would reinforce code requirements, penalties for noncompliance, et cetera. One example is, I'm pretty sure the city of Big Bear Lake has this kind of training requirement, and I believe their trainers actually have a certification that they go through. Calls to the city, all of these have costs. You know, all regulations have costs, so keep that in mind. It's about medium to prepare the training materials and staff time for code enforcement to conduct the classes. I think in big bear cases, they actually have trainers that are certified, and then the certified trainers can conduct the classes. In-person check-in by owner and agent. Again, this is one, I believe, from Palm Springs. Yes, the tenants are required to sign an agreement, they'll abide by the rules. This reinforces that, because the owner or agent has to physically meet the applicants at the home, again, go over the rules, you know, with respect to noise, occupancy limits, that sort of thing, and witness them signing it in front of them. It's necessarily a good neighbor agreement type of. This cost to the city is pretty minimal. The burden is mostly placed on the owner or agent, but there has to be some sort of staff check every now and then that this is actually being done. Additional code enforcement. So one of the, you know, complaints is that, you know, oftentimes the problems happen on weekends, especially Friday and Saturday. Everybody knows that the city's closed on those Fridays, on those days, and that's where all the problems typically happen, is on Fridays and Saturdays. Certainly, most of our unpermitted building work is done on those days. So the city is looking to extend that coverage, especially Friday and Saturday. This is not twenty-four hours unless the city wants to fund more of those positions twenty-four hours. But certainly adding another part-time code enforcement position, which the city did approve in its latest budget. We've already had our interviews, and the candidate is currently going through a background check at this point. So that would help us extend the hours, certainly Fridays and Saturdays, potentially Sundays. We have to work this schedule out, because we're sharing this position with animal control. Increase fines for violation. I know this is something the county recently did. These are our current fines, first violation, second violation, third violation, from two fifty to a thousand. One potential, okay, potential suggestion was double the fines, so that they're five hundred, a thousand, and two thousand. And then specifically have a fine for failure to register a VHR. We do have software that sweeps the internet, looks for addresses, compares those with the ones in our database to see if, in fact, they are registered. It does give us some false positives every now and then. For example, somebody that's leasing more than thirty days would still show up, and, you know, we have to, they explain, hey, I'm operating within the code. But it's pretty good at catching them. That doesn't mean it's perfect, but it's pretty exhaustive among all the different sites that are out there for booking VHRs. And they're not just Airbnb, there's VRBO, and I think there's at least fifteen or twenty others, Travelocity, all sorts of sites that do that. One of the things that has changed between when the code was adopted and currently is it's much easier to book a short-term rental. You know, I've had some of the old timers tell me, I've been leasing my place out for vacations before you guys had a code, you know? But it wasn't, you know, formalized, it wasn't regulated. Now it's a whole lot easier to register. It's a whole lot easier to find that home and register. Requirement that owners be a resident, with the idea that that would prevent out-of-towners from buying homes and converting to VHRs. We have talked with attorneys before about this issue, and it would likely be seen as discriminatory. You know, first of all, define time of residency. Is it one day? Is it one year? Is it ten years? Does that make you a resident? Does just having a twenty-nine Palms driver's license make you a registrant? So we do have some residents, you know, that have a twenty-five, twenty-nine Palms address, but they're only here part-time, such as the snowbirds and deployed military in certain instances. So this is difficult to enforce, I will say. And there is an example, a very real example, that we had pretty recently. Our code used to say that if you have an accessory dwelling unit and you rent it out, you had to live in the main house, okay? And you could rent out your accessory dwelling unit, you as the owner. Well, we've had situations where the owner died, passed away, left a property to, say, the son. The son decided, well, I don't want to live in the main house, I want to rent it out. So in that case, do we kick the Marine family out of the accessory dwelling unit because the owner is no longer, you know, in the main house? So we were on our way to changing that, but eventually the state superseded us. You know, the state said, here's a whole new accessory dwelling. You guys will recall this, we reviewed it probably about five or six months ago. Here's a whole new accessory dwelling unit, you will adopt this. And that came down from the state. So accessory dwelling units are pretty much allowed in most residential zones. You do not have to have a residency requirement on it. There's still regulations around them, septic, that sort of thing. So that's just kind of example of how difficult it is. Overall cap on VHRs. So this is one comment, that VHRs reduce the overall housing stock available to long-term rentals and homeowners. And I believe that's certainly true if we look at the Joshua Tree example. I don't know the exact numbers, because it depends on if you use Joshua Tree census designated place, or what the county defines as Joshua Tree area in their plan, but it's a very high percentage of the homes in Joshua Tree are vacation home rentals. I think it's as much as twenty-five percent, if I do, if I do the math correctly. So it is a very real possibility. And I know at one of our meetings, even though we're now currently at two-point-six percent, one of the residents said, well, Joshua Tree at one time was at the two-point-six percent. So, you know, it's, could potentially be there. So what is an objective percentage? You know, this is something, if we set an overall cap, you know, what is that objective percentage? Is it, okay, up to five percent, ten percent? What should that be? These are based on the twenty-eighteen housing numbers that we get from Department of Finance. They tend to be the most accurate. Well, because of COVID, we not getting quite as regular updates, but I'm hoping soon we'll get some new ones, especially with the new census numbers coming out. This is very minimum cost to the city. We know what the cap is. We know how many homes we're building each year, so it's not difficult to enforce an overall cap. Revocation of permit directly by the Community Development Director. So as I mentioned, we do have a problem VHR in the Indian Cove area. We've had two complaints. They have been validated, both have been validated by multiple neighbors. So we will be bringing that to revocation to the planning commission. It's almost a two-striker out. I know the code says first, second, third violation, but there's nothing in the code that says the Community Development Director cannot bring a revocation to the planning commission immediately if there is a problem. So. But the code also requires that you have a public hearing, that you have noticing, and before that decision is made by you, the planning commission. So one change that could be allowed to allow this process to happen faster is for the Community Development Director to revoke the permit based on the nuisance violation. It would be validated, so you would have to trust our code enforcement and the director that it's validated and cooperated with neighbors. But then the owner could appeal the director's decision. So they're always, in each case, there always has to be the legal recourse to appeal. So that's not in our code now. The code as it's written says, no, it goes to the planning commission. The planning commission can revoke, they can suspend, you know, they can impose penalty, you know, all of those above. So that's one idea that was thrown out. Owner cannot hold two permitted VHRs adjacent to each other. So of what I would call the four nuisance permits, nuisance complaints that we've had, three of the four, the houses were next to each other. So not guaranteed, but that tends to, if a group is renting two houses adjacent to each other, it could potentially lead to larger gatherings, which leads to more noise and potentially parties. Okay? Of course, again, define adjacent. So that's, that's what our attorney throws out to us, okay? When you have a regulation, define what that is, you know? What's the old saying, is a hot dog, is a hot dog a sandwich? Right? Well, define hot dog. Well, it's a meat between two slices of bun. Well, by that definition, a hot dog is a sandwich. So that's, that's the way the code is, needs to be written and interpreted, so. So you have to define what adjacent is. But in this case, I mean two side by side on the same street. Again, minimum, I think we can easily do this by looking at the application, comparing it to the addresses. Low if technology is used, and I'll get into the technology a little bit more. Changes to the appeal process. I believe what's saying is our appeal letter is very misleading. It makes it sound like, if I have a problem with VHRs, I can show up and object and, and it will be denied. Okay? That's not quite the way appeals are made. There has to be good grounds for appeal, and there has to be findings to why it's not meeting the code. By our current policy, appellants are, well, it's almost backwards. You can appeal a VHR before a decision is made. Okay? That happens nowhere else within our code. Because you're basically appealing the possibility of a decision. Okay? Anywhere else, site plan approvals, conditional use permits, some of the other type of licenses you can appeal after the decision is made. But you're, in this case, this is the one part of the code where you would be appealing before. By the previous policy, they are not charged a fee, and that does lead to appeals of no basis. It basically means, I don't like it, I don't want it, the city should deny it. Okay? Or ban them. Okay? If we want to ban them, that's a change in the code. Okay? So what Yocavale notices, and I don't always uphold them as the highest standard, but they noticed the application at its submittal, and that gives the neighbors the opportunity to raise any issues that they have. But then the appeal is made after a formal decision is made. And it is charged, okay, because there's cost for all of us being here tonight. I estimate at least a thousand dollars per appeal, because you have the newspaper ads, you have the staff time to write the staff reports, the noticing, the public hearing costs, it does add up. And it's frustrating for anyone showing up who believes an appeal is basically a way to stop it. Okay? So that is, you know, a problem in our current process. Limit the number of VHRs by neighborhood. And that sounds easy, all of these sound easy, but then you have to implement them. Okay? Define a neighborhood. A lot of us, you know, say, okay, well, I live in, you know, the Hanson Track, or I live downtown, and we're going through a downtown plan now, we're trying to define downtown, and there's not always agreement on that. It's more difficult in twenty-nine Palms, because we have patches of tracks, of subdivision, that are more densely populated, densely populated by twenty-nine Palm standards. But then they're separated by really wide open spaces, by large lots. And you can, you know, look at our land use map, and you can see that. We have lots of areas where you've got tracks, and then in the middle are these open areas. So where do you draw? So where do you draw the line? Do the open areas be split and become part of the neighborhoods, you know, to either side? Are they their own neighborhood? You know, it's, it's, it's a difficult process to go through. And we have an extremely large area in the city at 58.76 miles. So this would require the use of technology, and I'll mention G I, GIS. GIS stands for geographic information systems. It's a way of mapping, doing analysis, what we call spatial analysis with data that's out there. But just having a limit by neighborhood does not limit, eliminate the clustering in and of itself, and it does not eliminate that you could have a bad operator of a VHR. So the cost to the city is high, because we're going to have labor to define those neighborhoods and go throughout the 58.76 square miles. And there's not going to be agreement on, especially for the people that are in the rural areas between, you know, no, I'm not in Indian Cove, I'm in Sherman, you know, Heights, or, you know, the areas that are in between, or I'm not in Hanson Track, I'm in my own neighborhood, Utah Trail. So it's, it's, it's going to be a, a challenge to do that. And then I'll end with this one, and again, I know there's many more. I talked about, you know, minimum lot sizes and a whole bunch of others that continue to come in by email. But one is the distancing requirement between VHRs. So this would eliminate, help eliminate the clustering. Again, does not necessarily ensure the VHRs run properly, but could ensure that they're being spaced further apart, you know, they're not being clustered. Going back to being objective is what's that objective distance? You know, you know, what is that objective distance? The state law for noticing requires 300 feet. So that's what we go by is the 300 foot, okay? That doesn't mean we couldn't regu- have a regulation that says more, but as far as noticing, the state law says 300 feet. So how do we do that, okay? Well, here's the legal way to do that. First of all, you get recent parcel data as the base layer for mapping, okay? We, we map by parcel, again, not a centroid for an address, but, but a parcel. That parcel data is not held by us, that's held by the county assessor. County updates, maintains all the parcel data for the county. It does change routinely with new owners, parcel mergers, those sorts of things. Presently, we have a software subscription, and they updated, I would guess probably two to three times a year, wouldn't you say, Shelley, that we notice it?
Maybe quarterly.
Yeah, maybe quarterly, up to four. And that's the way most cities, that's, most cities have that current organization, you know, because they're, they don't have direct access to the county's database. In developing our new management system, we were hoping to do better than that. We were hoping to improve the regularity of the updates without actually having to download the county parcel data, clip it to the city's boundary, re-project it to state plane, all of these other steps before we can bring it in and use it. So we, we are working on a weekly update through our management software. We're using a very new technology called web services. So new that we're the only city right now that's been able to make that work. And it's, it's taken about five months, frankly, because between the software company, the county, and the makers of GIS software, the largest of which is ESRI, it's, it's a lot of hands. And the county is very protective of this data because it has sensitive information, so there's a lot of security involved. But we made it work. It broke last week because somebody at the county flipped the switch somewhere and made everything, you know, not work, but hopefully we got that fixed. As I mentioned, data must be in the same geographic projection. If you're going to do distancing, then projection, what we call map projection is very important because projections have different things that skew one way or other, shape, area, distance, that sort of thing. So in order for it to measure properly, it has to be in the right geographic projection. We then export our data from the management database with a field that can be joined to the GIS, okay? That's an assessor's parcel number. It has to be an exact match, okay? Software is, is not forgiving, you know, doesn't try to guess what you're trying to do, has to be an exact match. So when I created these maps I, I'm about to show you, we did have a parcel that did not join. It took us a while to figure out why is this not pulling over? We had some numbers transposed in the APN, you know? Was not intentional, just a mistake. So that's, once validated, all the data is transferred, run a buffer operation. So this is again another GIS term. If you're trying to set a distance between you and another object, you run what's called a buffering operation, and that's based on the prescribed distance around, again, the parcel boundary, not the centroid of the parcel, because you can have, you know, if, if the distancing requirement is 300 feet, and you have a parcel that's 1,000 feet and you're just using the centroid, nobody gets the notification, right? So that's why we use the parcel boundary. Merge all the buffered polygons to create one new buffer. Select the property where the VHR is proposed to see it falls within the buffer. Then the new approved VHR is included in the next buffer operation. And this would just kind of keep repeating. One issue with doing that is it would need to be updated every time there is an approval or removal or even an inquiry, because nobody's going to want to, you know, consider a VHR if it doesn't fall within that buffered area, okay? So they want something that's outside. So in essence, it's creating the polka dot map, you know? Potential conflicts or unintended consequences. Again, two applications in for the same area at the same time, what do you do? Whoever's the first in, or the first complete, because we get those situations. We will have one that's in, but it takes them a while to go through the process, whereas another one, it's a lot more speedily, less issues, and they're, they're complete for earlier. And here's another unintended consequence I think of, forcing VHRs to other location, you know, because we're still going to, even if we do all of this, and we find the holes that are still left, somebody's going to propose a VHR in that location, and we're still going to get, why, I don't want it, you know, why is this VHR, VHR in my neighborhood? Well, the, the city said I could put it there, because this is an area that's not in the buffered area. So we will get that. Cost to the city, I'm going to say high, certainly high if it's a manual analysis, medium if it can be automated. So, you know, I, I always say this, anything possible software, if you throw enough money at it, right? And we do have our software, management software company looking at how do you solve the buffering problem? The first go at it was not successful, way too many parcels were returned, so we're trying to figure that out. It's the GIS company's issue. Well, we've got to open a ticket, so, you know, that, that all starts here soon. But one of the things is management call, software companies, they do that portion very well. They're not necessarily good at GIS. GIS software companies do that portion very well. They're not necessarily good at management software. So we are trying to do everything in one software package to reduce the amount of time and energy and that, you know, all of this effort, and effort that it takes. And then part of this is having staff that's trained in how to use this technology. So right now, I'm the only one that knows how to use GIS among staff. So if I leave, or I get hit by the bus, we don't have staff that can pick up the slack and keep going. So it's not easy software to learn. You probably know, there's a bit of a learning curve, but it can be done, you can teach. So that's why to be sustainable, it really should be automated and, and within the system, despite whatever staff changes that are out there.
Unless you die from the bus.
Unless I die from the bus. So just some examples, just to visualize, you know, what that distance is and what the implications are. So this is the data, again, current as of July 13th with the 300-foot buffer, again, around the parcel boundary. So you can see the overlap, it shows Indian Cove as the example, or how many there. You can see probably if you impose the restriction, you would, in essence, eliminate some that are in this area, you would force them more into this area that's currently open. But some of these, the overlap that fall within the buffer, 300-foot buffer would be eliminated. So just eyeball in the map, maybe you would end up with probably 10 to 15, depending on where they're placed. This is a 500-foot buffer for, you know, the same, same properties. Again, probably here, you might end up with sort of like maybe eight to 10, based on that buffer. If we go for a 1,000-foot buffer, that's what that looks like. Potentially, you may end up with three, but probably not even that, based on a 1,000-foot buffer. And then this is a 2,000-foot buffer, essentially, I think you would end up with one, maybe two in, in the rural areas. So, and you could keep going, you could keep going with this analysis, you could 58 mile square foot buffer, one in the city, you know? So these were just some of the ideas. I know there are many more that are out there. What I would like to do is obviously get your questions about any of these, open it up to the public to provide feedback and to provide any other suggestions or ideas for greater restrictions and regulations, including ban, if that's the sentiment. Then we can take those to council, and we can say, you know, here's kind of the sentiment of the planning commission. Probably not looking for a formal vote on each one, but maybe a show of hand so we can just get an idea of, you know, where the sentiment is, so. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and then we can open it up to the public.
Okay, we'll start with Jim.
A quick question, and I know the question came up about individuals making complaints and having the complaints responded to. I guess that can partially be taken care of by additional code enforcement, or is there a method? What, how many complaints have we gotten on VHRs that have been validated, honest-to-God complaints on VHRs?
I would say four nuisance complaints.
Four nuisance complaints.
Four loud noise, parties, that sort of thing.
What's our number up to now in the city?
The other, the other complaints that we've got are more like a missing sign.
Oh, okay.
And sometimes that maybe not be by, you know, anyone's fault, we've got high winds here, sometimes the winds blow the sign down, that sort of thing. Most recently, it wasn't a VHR specific, someone had some outdoor string lights.
Right.
That shone a little bit over the fence. We contacted them, they lowered the lights, there was no issue. They weren't complaining specifically about the VHR, it was more about the lights.
And I know the number's been increasing, increasing. What are we up to now in the city?
150 with 50.
150?
Pending.
150 with about 50.
Okay.
50 pending, yeah.
Okay.
Max?
What do we, what do we use currently to get that, that 300 feet, to know who we're mailing letters out to?
We use a program called GovClarity.
Could we?
It's actually similar to the program that we have on the city's website, Community View, is very similar to that, same company.
We couldn't utilize that to, to say if we said a 300-foot buffer, if we put an address, we can't have a vacation rental with a?
They're not storing our VHR data.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they're not storing that.
That's why he says like that much more difficult to run it through this program, run it through this program, run it through this program.
And it would be the same thing. Even if they did, they would have to get updates every time we made it. And it is not easy updating through this company, as, as we will, as we will tell you. That's why we're looking at alternative solutions that give us more flexibility.
Okay.
Mendoza?
Quick question, Travis. On our 300-foot notification, that is from property line outward.
That's correct.
So not centric.
That's correct.
So if your property's 300 feet wide, you go 300 feet either direction.
That's correct.
From the boundary.
Yeah.
That's the only question I have.
I have no questions.
Okay, um, I think if we have our, like, code enforcement strictly, like, doing their jobs, responding to these calls, validating them, I think fees and increasing fees would be a strong way to immediately have that homeowner or VHR person be like, hey, yeah, this needs to stop or have more accountability of that. So I would agree with your suggestion of doubling, and I know you're going to take a poll vote here in a second, but I do think that the overall cap would be great, it's just determining that number with the current residential information of 2018 versus how much we know that we built. You know, now we could probably come up with what our true percentage is more likely out of that 5,900 that you had, because with 150, that means 2.6%. And then just whatever is the favor of, so if we're saying like the limit is 500 feet from this person, and establishing the impossible of like neighborhoods, and if we did go through that, how would, you know, just creating that system of, okay, I don't have the right right now to apply for the permit because my neighborhood is currently booked, how do I like manage that waiting list of who gets to, as a property owner, become the next in line to be able to do? As you kind of touched on in your, you know, how do you even manage that? So it's one of those consequential things that, based off how we're going to decide that. You know, and some people could feel like they're, that's taking the right of, you know, my property, or I have the right to do that on my property. But at least establishing, I think, that better rule, we could probably have like an expectation set, and then maybe people wouldn't want to buy short-term, but you'd see, okay, I'll still buy it, but I can do long-term rentals, and maybe, you know, that's how they create their income. So there's still a possibility of having an income property. I know some people also do, like, if you require the owner to be so, so close, maybe that would turn off a lot of people from buying, thus creating more inventory for Twenty-Nine Palms to have people live here or buy the homes too. So it's going to definitely take, you know, some time to go through all this. I know it's been a long night, and you just kind of want to get a poll, and then we do have your six, and I know you guys have all been like, okay, when's it our turn? So I, I didn't have specific questions, but I know what it comes down to, there'll be some detailed, you know, examining of, of how that could work and apply to our code to suit the city. So with that, did you have anything else for us before?
Well, I, I would make one comment, and, and this is generally about housing, and, you know, right now, it's a low percent, percentage of our available housing stock, but obviously there's a potential for it to go much larger, you know, Joshua Tree.
Of course, yeah, if we don't change the code now, yeah.
There is an overall housing crisis everywhere, not just Twenty-Nine Palms, San Bernardino County, California, the country, even the world. I've got relatives in Ireland that are like, you think you have problems? Come over here, it's, it's much worse over here. And there's lots of reasons for that, you know, lots of pent-up demand and not building as much. We've made it a lot more difficult for developers to build housing, especially in the state of California. It is very difficult to get through all the regulations, the environmental regulations and such, that, you know, we, at one time, we had probably, I don't know, 15 or so track maps that had gone through the process, and a lot of them just walking away, because it's just not worth it. So it's a real, it's a real crisis, and some of the things that Sacramento is trying to do with a heavy hand is, you know, forcing the communities to develop housing. Well, if there's no market, that's just not going to happen, but changing the regulations around accessory dwelling units, and, and, you know, there's talk about potentially changing the regulations around single-family housing, allowing duplexes, in some cases, triplexes, and what is exclusionary Euclidean zoning of single-family housing. That's actually happened in a couple of states. I think Minnesota, don't quote me exactly on that, I'm pretty sure Oregon has something like that, some places in Oregon, so, you know, there are. Some places in Oregon, so, you know, they're up in Sacramento trying to think of all these different ways to increase housing, but you, you can't force it. The market, you know, the market will be there for it. And in our situation, because we're still on septic, it is more of a challenge to develop affordable housing. Affordable housing doesn't typically be, is typically not on five acre, ten acre lots, so. I'll shut up so the people in the audience can speak and you can hear from them.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. So first one, I have Marshall Drummond.
He couldn't be here.
Oh, he's the gentleman who had to leave?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the same stuff. Good afternoon, my name is Marshall Drummond, I'm a resident of Twenty-Nine Palms. Before I talk about VHR, if you're familiar with it, I want to thank the listeners for your service, for working, guiding the future of our Palms community, we appreciate it. Since two thousand and six, I purchased acres on the top of Indian Cove, close to the bathroom park. Built a home and a horse facility there and became a resident in Indian Cove. Solitude, safety and proximity to the park, more factors than life, which we will take. The recent proliferation of VHR in Indian Cove is quickly changing the character of the neighborhood. We've been crowding that some VHRs create traffic problems in that, in that roads are not wide and berm dust, street parking can make passagists cold. Frequent excessive noises late night hours have kept my wife and I, my wife and I unable to sleep, all of our property is a hundred yards distant from Indian Cove structure. Traffic for looksees on our private road has increased considerably as we have reports of vandalism and various confrontations stemming from VHR occupants. Residents of Indian Cove used to include many part workers and active retired members of the Marine Corps, along with young families. These are rapidly disappearing as long term rentals, which have been converted into VHRs, resulting in few homes left on the rental market. We miss those young families and the children that come with us. I ask that you show restraint in approving additional VHR applications in our neighborhood until the current level, the new VHRs is fully digested. Also, the parameters on required onsite parking for new approvals, as most have space for fewer vehicles and occupancy limits, would dictate leading to problem, problematic, congesting our neighborhood. So many VHRs are making Indian Cove a much less desirable place to live and enjoy the great things that Twenty-Nine Palms desert living has to offer.
Thank you for reading that for him. Sarah Beck? Thank you for patiently being here with us this entire time.
Thank you very much. My name is Sarah Beck, I own one of our vacation rentals at seventeen ninety-three five Siesta Drive. As your business partner, as a vacation home renter, owner, I am your business partner. I am here to help make positive change. I'm very impressed with all of this that I see before me because I feel like you have actually thought about it and I feel like it isn't maybe one direction, it's going in one direction and not the other direction. It kind of makes me feel a little bit more comfortable after sitting through the meeting, so I want to thank you very much for that. You know, being, being part of this community, we have waited for this amazing growth in the desert and waited for Twenty-Nine Palms to be in this state. You were preparing the city for future growth with the Phoenix Project, building curbs and sidewalks, repaving our roads, et cetera. You are welcoming travelers who want, and we want them to stay, shop, and eat here and lodge here. We are your lodging. We are vacation rentals set up for lodging for those people. Take your time, don't make a speedy decision on these vacation rentals and all of these different things. I really appreciate these, these study sessions because it's very interesting, we all learn a lot. Findings for the hosts I want to talk about because it's very difficult having this position as a host. But I really would like to be part of the movement and to see a lot of things come down for the host because I think it's very needed. Being the host, seeing the problems, controlling the noise is our number one concern. It's our number one concern, from the time they check in on Friday until they leave on Sunday, and then I get a break. So I totally get it and I want it so bad. And I really appreciate all the paperwork that I have to go through to make everybody sign it. Noise, 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 noise. I had one lady tell me yesterday, you're my mother. I'm like, that's right, even if I'm in my home. And it's very difficult, and I just want to share that. So being part of that, I'm not even reading everything. Having a vacation rental is a business, so let's treat it like business hosts, okay? So let's have more paperwork, let's have laws of the people that check in, they don't check in, they do all this, the noise, all of these things. I think more paperwork is justified for the hosts, and I'm a host, okay? Having these classes to begin with to know what they're getting themselves into, maybe they don't want to do it. I think it's very important to think that we have these classes. And possibly, there's a business that can be started with all this and having another monitoring system helping us out, drive by these, these potential problems, that they can help us stop it right away. So it's something that I'm actually looking into. It should not be the neighbors versus hosts versus the city. I just feel very upset about it. Every single weekend that I get a booking that, are my neighbors gonna be upset? I had the neighbors call me twice in the weekend saying that our vacation rental is causing a muck. I called the people and I said, oh my gosh, you're sending all this noise ordinance? And they're thinking, how could you do all that? She says, I'm not even there, I don't even know what they're talking about. They were down in Palm Springs and it wasn't my house, it was a resident. So we're getting calls on ourselves when it's not our vacation rental. Anyways, shoot.
I know, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Beck. I know you waited a long time, you know, this evening to say your comments. Cindy Bernard?
Hi Jim.
Hi.
My recommendation, which I think I made at the last city council meeting, was not on the list, which is that vacation rentals being limited to primary residences. Primary residence can be determined by voter registration and driver's license address with a cap of so many days per year to guarantee that the house has been used by primary residents. So, so these are LA's ordinance actually, this is the ordinance that I just put into effect in the last, I think, year.
March twenty-first.
Yeah, that, that, that VHR rentals are limited to a primary residence determined by, I don't know, voter registration, driver's license with a hundred day cap on rentals. If there's an ADL on the property, I'm not sure how that's handled, but that would have to be worked out. But I think that would solve a lot of those problems because then you don't have the discriminatory problem of Twenty-Nine Palms resident, which are determining according to primary residents, slightly different. Also, if you don't do that, I really believe you have to look at the number of permits per person. I mean, I appreciate what you just said, but you guys want three or four of them, right?
More than that.
Yeah, more than that, okay. I mean, I have listed the owners here, some people have one, four, some people have three and there's one pending. Once you're running that many, she's right, it's a business. And businesses should not be in residential neighborhoods. We're talking about home shares, that's what Airbnbs originally were, home shares. And if the primary resident that keeps it as a home share, I think that, and that solves some of the issues because you're out with somebody's home. The, the questions about complaints are always problematic. Because in fact, the complaint, like, that this city is so buried on the website that no one can find it. So it makes it very hard to make a complaint to the city in the first place, that's why you don't have any complaints. Also, the phone number, everybody's gonna call the owner, they're not gonna do a complaint to the city. So you actually don't have any way of monitoring the number of complaints that exist on the VHRs. If you make the complaint more present, you might see more. But I would recommend a hotline that also is on the sign, along with the owner's phone number. Then you would be able to see how many complaints you're actually doing. The, the map that you show, you know, as you probably know, we have created a map ourselves that is interactive and really does show in a much better way the number of VHRs in the city. You can actually see them, you can see who owns them, that's what the city needs. And that notification grid in the history of the city is not out, but it needs to be bigger. So I think that's it. But my primary comment is, I mean, spatial limit, I know that's gonna be a real hard thing to implement. I would go with primary residence only.
Cindy, just to clarify, are you saying the owner should be living there at the time?
Yeah, the owner, there's a primary residence requirement. The owner doesn't have to live there at the time, but the owner has to only rent for a hundred and twenty days a year. In other words, the owner has to live on the property the majority of the year. They can rent the other days.
Okay. Yeah, I understand the cap.
So, so, so you have a day cap, and then what would happen is even if you had, I mean, I don't know if that solves the density issue necessarily, but if you have someone with that kind of cap, they're not gonna necessarily be renting at the same time as the other person, right? So it might solve some of those issues without getting discriminatory problems.
Thank you. Heidi Hurd?
Cindy, you covered all the levels, so I'll take my three minutes to summarize.
Okay, thank you. We have Christina, H O U D, did I say that right? Oh, oh, okay, sorry, didn't close the circle.
No, it was not, ma'am. Thank you for hearing us tonight, we do appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and you may be a captive audience, but we do appreciate the audience. I have a number of suggestions, some of which I made previously to the city council, which were not spoken up today, and they're scribbled, so it might take me a little while to get through my small handwriting. First of all, I would suggest that the number of people allowed in a vacation home rental and the number of vehicles allowed there are both included on the sign. Right now, it's very difficult to find that information, it's hard to know what's allowed, what type of problems next to you. Second of all, I want to second Cindy's suggestion of a hotline, right now, there's no accountability. You're asking the designated or individual property owners to self-report their complaints to you, which is obviously not a system that has any real accountability in it. The second issue with that is that there's no accountability for the one hour response time, which is required in the regulation, there's no way the city knows if that's being held. Both of those are problematic. Next, I think that the cost, the city should calculate the cost of the permitting, the permits that it's issuing based on the cost of enforcement for those permits. It should evaluate the cost of having a code compliant officer available, preferably twenty-four hours a day, but definitely on the weekends, late at night, and that cost should be factored into the cost to get a vacation home rental permit in the city. Third, the city should be reinvesting a portion of the profits it's taking from vacation home rentals into the communities that are paying for those vacation home rentals to be there. In, in Indian Cove, we don't have any sidewalks. We had our potholes fixed, but they are now potholes again. We don't have any parks, the city's building a new park, that's a expanded park access, they're building it between two existing parks. There's no parks, anywhere near Indian Cove, no city parks. There's no, also no parks near the north side of town, there's no parks for people who like to hear trouble drop. There's no people in ABC, so they're all places in the city that deserve to have access to city institutions and city resources. Fourth, I wanted to suggest that the consideration of lot size comes into play in a lot, the number of people allowed in a vacation rental, everyone on a fifth of an acre. The house next to me has four bedrooms and is allowed to have ten people stay in there. The wall within, about fifteen to twenty feet from my house, whenever it's fully occupied, I can hear that noise constantly, even if it's averse to full sound, I can hear it because there can be ten people there every night of the year, there's no limit to that. I want to suggest that vacation home rental permit applicants are required to speak to the people in the neighborhood and have conversations with them and inform them that what they're having or what they want to do, I think that that's, if this is gonna contribute to the community, that's the only way to do it. I want to make sure that when vacation home rentals do have violations, that penalties are lifted against them. I think that there are ways to successfully limit possibly either the number of nights that a vacation home rental is allowed to be rented per year, I think that's reasonable. I have more comments, but I feel like I should submit those to human writing.
Yes, thank you for your comments. Bill Easter, are you, yes.
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, thanks for being here. I'll tell you what, you have a tough job in front of you. Like I said before, I've been here before, I've sat in every one of those seats up there for eleven years, so I know what you're going through. But I do have some questions, well, the first comment that Travis made, who was talking about earlier, was I don't want someone telling me what to do with my property. Government does that all the time. We're doing that right here with these rules, we're telling vacation rental applicants what to do with their property. So that, I don't know how that works out, but it basically goes both ways. The market right now, I think, is oversaturated, we have less inventory for long term renters. That does affect, by the way, our schools, who do not give in the school seats. It takes money from the schools, people need to think about that. The complaint system, I don't care if we have, we're sure we have one or four complaints, that is not accurate. Do you get complaints or notification from the sheriff's department that reflects any complaints they get? And I don't believe that the owners themselves are gonna be turning themselves into the city. I just, I just pride that, it doesn't make sense to me. And then, of course, like the Airbnb, I don't think there's any vetting there either. I think if we continue going the route we're going right now, we're gonna be a Joshua Tree here in the near future. We need to do something. We're two point five percent or whatever that is, could be a twenty-six percent, if that's even accurate, number of Joshua Tree, and I don't think it is. I think they're all in there. I came here in May with my daughter, she pulled an earth for her appeal. And I think you guys, in every one of those appeals, did what you're required to do, it's your job. So I commend you on doing your job. But I also asked at that time that you do a moratorium. You can't do the moratorium, I understand that. But what I'm asking you to do tonight is, I'm asking you to recommend or do a motion tonight, send a recommendation to the city council to do an emergency moratorium on any further vacation home rentals until this is resolved, because this could be months we're talking about here. And I think waiting till the twenty-four, it's like we're one of those backwaters. The moratorium should have been discussed before we're discussing these rules. It just doesn't make sense to me. Let's stop the train now because it's running fast. We need to stop it right now, and I agree with some people that are in favor of vacation rentals, as a matter of fact, I am too. My concern isn't the noise, my concern is really the clustering. I think we have too many that are being clustered in one area of the city. And if someone wants me to show them how to work Google Earth, I can draw a line three hundred feet to the next property and I don't know if that's the number they want. But it's pretty easy and pretty cheap to use Google Earth to figure out how far a vacation rental is away from the other one. Is that easy?
Thank you for your comments. Vino?
Thank you. In fact, I want to talk about the two point six, this is about homes that are on vacation rentals. I'm a small businessman in town, and basically, my staff is finding very difficult to find housing. I'm not the only small businessman that's going through that process right now. Right now, I'm actually asking two people from that works at the Central, I'm saying, I'm sort of there. Charles Clark and Darren Olson, it's fully okay. Yeah, because I was facing that problem, I went to Esther Levi and provided subsidized housing for my staff. I went through a little process and found out that I would put almost a mile of road, I canned that project with the suggestion of Travis. I'm going to Esther Levi, a couple of meaningful blocks, which are little single family homes, to house my staff. The state has mandated that every city provides housing. We are a little bit fortunate in the city in the sense that we have six hundred and forty hotel rooms, that's running at fifty percent occupancy. Isn't really a need for somebody to own four vacation rentals? All of that, I'm fine with that. Sharing your house for a hundred and twenty days, I'm fine with that. But to buy four houses and take it off the market, that's not fair to the people who work in the city, cannot find decent a board of a lawn. The people who work in the city is faced with two problems. The vacation allowance has increased, our biggest homeowner also completes the hotel and learns to cover it, and they cannot afford housing. So please think before you start putting more and more vacation rentals. Limited to one vacation rental per person, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do I have any more public comments who didn't fill out? Okay, I'll go ahead and close. Okay, that concludes our study session, but before that, you wanted to do the poll, poll?
Poll on these, but if the commission wanted to advance any of these, I'm, we're gonna send them to council regardless. But I'm gonna have to get some of these in writing from you all because I tried to write as fast as I could and I, I can't keep up as fast as you can talk sometimes.
We have three minutes.
Yeah, I know, I know. We're already here at a, so I would like to take a poll and then, again... Uh, we're already here at a, uh, so I, I would like to take a poll and then again, if you guys heard anything else.
Real quick though Travis, I'd like to make a motion, we send to council our recommendation to put an emergency moratorium on vacation home rentals right now until we can figure out the new development code.
Well, I, I will say this, it takes an ordinance to impose a moratorium. Okay? You can't just do it by resolution. It takes an ordinance, okay? Because it is an ordinance now and you need an ordinance to change it. So that's one of the issues that, that you're facing is, you know, and because it's an ordinance, you know, there's a whole process to go through that.
Right, okay.
So I, I do know that I, it's on their, August?
On the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, agenda.
Okay, so we'll proceed with?
Oh, and one other thing, I believe, it's my understanding that a moratorium requires a super majority of the council to approve. So that's for councilperson.
Okay, so we can't accept your motion at this time? Thank you. So we'll go ahead and do the polling, just to get, get a gauge so that we can suggest?
Can you explain what just happened? I'm sorry, I'm confused. You prefer a motion, no one's gonna second you to delve it out?
No, it's, it, we, we can't motion at this time for that.
It's not the right procedure.
Can you make a motion if they vote on it soon as the twenty-fourth?
We can't do that.
We, we don't direct the council.
That's what we're, that, so that's what Travis is trying to do, is get our, um, overall, like, that's, he's gonna pull for what we wanna try to create to send to them. Right.
And, and we can pull who's in favor of a moratorium. We can certainly throw that into the poll here.
That we, yeah, so when they come to their next meeting, Travis could say that, that our suggestion at the commission was?
Your motion is a suggestion, it's your motion to the council. I don't see why you can't make that motion.
You can certainly make a motion, but it's, you know, it's not implementable.
It's not by you, it's not implementable.
Right, by council.
But it goes to council.
Right.
It does go to council, if you all agree with that.
I mean, if you said a suggested moratorium is one of the?
If we suggested a moratorium is one of the restrictions or regulations for V H R or, it could be number eight.
Or there, he has a second page.
Is there a second page?
Yeah.
Oh.
You're just telling me what's bringing this up?
It's thirteen, yeah.
Right, I understand.
This meeting, the meeting needs to be conducted by itself instead of these people conducting the meeting.
This is a serious question.
As close to the comments that the people have had.
Okay, so we'll just proceed with?
We can, we can add moratorium.
We'll add that to number whatever, how many?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Right.
Okay, go ahead Travis.
Yeah, so this is a polling, just show of hands.
Just polling, just for show of hands, not?
Four against, right. Could you read? Yeah, if you could.
You want the chair to do it? Would you like to do it? I'm just glad that the cricket's not chirping anymore. Um, mandatory training requirement for V H R owners and agents?
No opinion?
Okay.
No opinion?
Okay. Four yes, one abstain, I would say, right?
Number two would be, uh, in-person check-in by owner or agent?
Abstain.
Two yeses.
Um, additional code enforcement resources? Unanimous? Increased fines for violations? Requirement that the owner be a city resident?
What did she say?
Requirement that the owner be a city resident.
I, I believe there's something to that, but I don't?
Primary residence.
A primary resident.
Primary, primary residence.
So how many commission votes do I have? Just one? Overall cap on total V H Rs in the city? You got four?
I was at four, okay.
Revocation of permit directly by the community development director?
You trust me that much?
Mm-hmm.
Owner cannot hold two permitted, V, permitted V H Rs adjacent to each other? That'd be number eight?
Oh, sorry. You have, you have to chip hit next on your?
Here's the problem I have with this poll. You're asking us to say we support or not support something when we haven't had a chance to look into it. First of all, like Travis said, define adjacent. Until I know what that means, I can't say I'm for it or against it.
So I'm just here to try to poll?
I understand that, but I'm saying, I don't think this poll is right or fair at this point.
It's, it's just a gauge.
It's a gauge.
It's a gauge. It's not like that you're officially agreeing to this standard that is literally a sentence that's just describing something. So it's just to get an idea of, if, okay, let me look more into that. What does that look like? How would that be rewritten? How would that be enforced? How would that be into the code? So it's just to get a sense of.
But my point is, I'm willing to look into every one of these, but I can't say whether I'm for it or against it because I don't have enough information. That's all I'm saying. I am willing to look at each and every one of these because there may be some that I'm going, eh, at this point, I don't think so. And after we do a little bit of study or whatever, I'll go, no, that's a good idea.
Right.
Right. It's just guiding his, um, depth of research or what he needs to?
What do we focus on?
Right.
Because, you know, there's a sense of urgency, right? And so we can continue talking, we continue having study sessions, uh, which stretch this out. But I would like to take some direction back to council saying, you know, based on this meeting, other input, here's where, you know, the sentiment is now. And I agree, we're not, you know, all, any code that we write, that we need, that is changed, has to go through a vetting process. And that includes the city attorney. Like, wait, the way you've written this is not legally defensible. You need to change it or, that's a, that's a process too, but?
Right, so this is phase one of the change.
Direction that we wanted to provide council early on, uh, soon.
Yes. So he mentioned number, uh, Shelley had read number eight.
Okay, owner, which I'm gonna read again, yeah. Owner cannot hold two permitted V H Rs adjacent to each other. Obviously, we need to look into that more. I realize that, Greg, but I think that we're just trying to get an idea of what's most important, um, so that when we bring this back to you, we have a focus.
Well, cause it's, it's gonna just conflict if you choose primary residence. You can't have two primary residents, so then you couldn't have two properties adjacent anyways. So we'll look into that one.
Okay, so, uh, for number eight, do we have votes?
I would say just, it, it needs?
Take it off?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, changes to the appeal process?
Uh, yes. Yes, we want changes.
Explaining it so people understand what the appeal process is.
Right now, there is an appeal process.
Yes, there is.
There, there is not.
Then what are we here for three times tonight?
Denial of a permit. No application for a permit or a subsequent renewal shall be denied if it meets the conditions of the permit issuance pursuant to this chapter.
So it sounds like we agree that that needs to be looked at.
Needs to be looked at. Or, or explained.
Yes.
But that, that's not explaining, we, we need to change that because there's no appeal process.
There's an appeal process as far as that they can?
Yes, we need, uh?
To have one. You're saying to even have one? This is just a shenanigans or whatever?
Yeah, but I can't appeal a court decision just by saying I don't like it.
Yeah.
There is an appeal process. There is also a thing that says if it meets the code requirements, they can appeal, but they have to appeal on the code requirement.
That negates, that negates?
But we, you can't come up and say, I don't like V H Rs. That's my appeal.
I understand that.
That's not an appeal.
But it's what I'm saying, is they, most of the people, most of the people that file these, can put these, these appeals, say they want to deny the appeal because of it, they feel it's changing the characteristic of their neighborhood. This is where they live, this is their neighborhood. They feel having seventeen vacation home rentals is changing the characteristics of their neighborhood.
And I think we had an explanation from Travis that what a character of a neighborhood is, is that correct?
But I define that differently than what?
Right, so we're all agreeing that number nine needs to be re, reviewed, yes.
I think that's five yeses, thank you.
So five yeses on that one?
Yeah.
Uh, spatial limitations which require G I S.
Yes.
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 Three?
I mean, I don't know, limitation of number of V H Rs?
That's something we need to look into.
By, by the neighborhood, I don't know how that would be?
Just a gauge.
Exactly.
Yeah, we?
So we agree, we need to look into that.
Okay, so three?
No, there's gonna be a limitation of the number of V H Rs by, by neighborhood.
Right.
But we don't know much about what, what neighborhood. There's no defined, there's areas like Hanson Track or this. So it, you'd have to go into that even in more depth.
That's, right.
So do, do we agree that, for example, in New Cove needs a limitation?
What you're gonna say, when you say you're voting for that, to me that says yes.
Okay.
It's not a serious vote, it's just a gauge of research.
Yeah, well, you want to?
My, my, my recommendation is because we have to do more of a study session, then we have to go through our whole permitting, or our public hearing. Then it goes to the city council for them to do, and they can change whatever they want to change. I think the only thing we should probably do at this point is we can't do a motion, but we can make the recommendation that the city council do a moratorium as fast as possible.
That's what my motion was.
That's number thirteen.
Okay.
So we're just at number ten. Do you believe there should be a limitations in neighborhoods as we do not have neighborhoods clearly defined in our city?
Spatial limitations, so in between each vacation home rental.
So five hundred, one thousand, two thousand?
Eleven, it's, it negates that.
They're like the same almost.
Right.
But neighborhood is the?
Take the word neighborhood out and we just do the distancing, we wanna focus on the distancing requirement between, between?
So they're not clustered.
Take out ten.
I would agree with eleven.
Yeah, take out ten, we agree to eleven.
All five of you on eleven?
Yes.
Okay, number twelve, uh, distancing requirements between V H Rs, which is kind of the same thing as ten.
Next, next slide.
Next slide, please.
He's writing, sorry. Yeah. Can you write and next slide at the same time Travis?
That, well, that, that's it. That's all that, that was?
Yeah, and then number, uh, did we have votes on number twelve?
So just, just before we go, just?
What is number twelve? Why don't these twelve?
Just?
We're adding it.
Yeah, there, ten got a, a, a number here in our, in our list, so the, so am I understanding the sentiment? You want to define neighborhoods? You want to go through this?
No, they want the, the distance requiring between V H Rs.
So it's, it's really eleven, sorry, Shelley, your sheets, it's really eleven in lieu of ten?
Correct.
Okay.
Which I crossed off ten and I got five.
I know.
That's right?
It's, our sheet has a number.
And what's the next one?
We, we have the numbering issue. Okay.
The numbering issue can be resolved later.
Yeah, I gotcha.
Okay.
And then number twelve?
Twelve was the moratorium?
Okay, so it's not a longer thirteen because the number adjustments to number thirteen, yes. We all agree that needs to stop so we can adjust it.
Who's in favor of the moratorium? Everybody is.
More, uh?
Okay.
Because this is not going to be a quick process.
No.
And we want it to be fair to the residents and to the applicants.
And that just means not accepting new permits?
And I don't have a problem with that.
Right.
But again, the city council has to issue that.
Correct. So Travis, do you feel good with the information you have?
Yeah, but was there anything from the audience that you felt we should take?
I do, um, agree with, um, I do believe there's over saturation, you know, and that we're catching it at a good time before. It's a too late Joshua Tree situation. Um, it is important that we have these schools and children are attending them, that people live in the neighborhoods to attend these schools. I'm not sure that prior to permit, that you could get a community meeting together, um, or how that could be arranged. Um, lot size, I guess residential, single-family home, I don't know if lot size matters, but if you're applying that distance, then I think that's gonna maybe? Um, I think the, uh, restriction on parking might be something to, to look at as far as like, but if it's public, like, public road, you could park anywhere on the public road, right? So?
You can do that now.
Right, you could do that now. That's a parking regulation?
Cause it's, it's in here, the, the maximum number of vehicles should not exceed more than one vehicle per room.
Per room, per bedroom.
Vacation home rental must have a minimum of two off-street onsite parking spaces.
On site?
On site? So if it's a violation, then that's code enforcement call?
Right.
Okay, so we do have something in play to address it.
Each permit has a number of maximum people that can stay there.
Okay, so hotline and the complaints, like, uh, I'm not sure if you could?
Increase code enforcement.
Well, let me, let me address that.
How do you do that?
Let me address that. When we looked at doing this, that was one of the things that we wanted to do, was to have an outside monitor that they could call. And that company would be the one to contact the owner and they have to respond within a certain amount of time. If they don't respond, then it goes as a complaint to the city. If they responded and handled the issue, it was not a complaint. Because they did what they were supposed to do. That company that we looked at was doing several in the low desert and they just were not getting a whole lot of calls, period. So, in fact, that company is no longer in business. But that was part of the issue that we found, which is why we put in ours, that you have to have somebody, whether it's the owner?
Respond with them.
Or the agent has to be able to respond physically, be on property physically within one hour.
Okay, so I think with the, um, person and background soon to be hired, um, flex, uh, you know, adjusted hours for Friday, Saturday should probably help with that. We can kind of gauge how that goes. Um, I definitely think maybe the cost to permit, um, should be adjusted to suffice, like, all of this, you know, if it's?
Excuse me, can I ask a question? One? You're not accepting any more input from us, so we're done, right? You guys are gonna discuss this yourselves, right? There's no more input from us?
Um, he's just asking for anything that we've heard from you that we'd like to add to that list.
Right, but you're not gonna get any more from us tonight, are you? You closed the?
The comment, the public comment? Oh.
You're done, right?
Yeah, we're very soon to adjourn, yeah. We're very soon to adjourn and you, yeah, yeah.
You can leave at any time.
Thank you. Um, overall cap, that primary, okay. I think that's pretty much external code enforcement. Formal training, I think that, that's, they could bring in a certificate from a, whatever you guys decide.
I think what was brought up by, by the public will be covered in more specific details with the items we, we voted to say, yes, let's look into this more. Those, the, the things they brought up needs to be discussed in detail in the items we're gonna look into further.
Yes.
I think we've?
Have a good list to start.
We have a good list to start, to revote, revamp the development code for vacation home rentals.
Okay.
And it's a start.
Yes.
It is a start.
Anything further from anybody?
I just would like to see the city council move as fast as they can on the moratorium, which does not put us in a position then of having to approve vacation home rentals under our current code.
I agree. And we all raise our hand to that polling?
Yep.
Okay, so then, nothing else, so go ahead and adjourn this meeting.
It's time for cold adult libations.
What's your next meeting?